Noon, ladies and gentlemen. It is Wednesday, October 16th, two days before Charles Henry Daley's 14th birthday, as I might mention, my youngest son. It is 3:03 in the afternoon. I would like to call this Tallahassee City Commission meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor and privilege to recognize Pastor Aaron Calhoun of Adventure Church that will be providing the invocation. Pastor, thank you for joining us. If you'll please stand for the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor Daley and City Council. Let us pray. Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for this great city of Tallahassee. Lord, I pray that you would give us wisdom and guidance, that you would lead this time together as we look to the business of the city. And God, we thank you for what you're doing here in this great city. We love you so much. Thank you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a full City Commission meeting today, and we have a public hearing at 6 o'clock. Colleagues, it is my goal to obviously get through all of the business that we can and be done by 6 o'clock with the opportunity for a short break before the public hearing. If it does not look like we'll be able to cover everything, then I will take a break at about 5:30. And after the public hearing, we will come back, finish the business before the city of Tallahassee, and have unengaged speakers in the sharing of ideas. Any questions on the schedule? Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Two items have been added to your agenda. Item 5.04, which is a presentation recognizing the South Side Action Plan by the Florida Chapter of the American Planning Association, as well as item 1206, which is approval of collective bargaining agreements with the Tallahassee Professional Firefighters.
Excellent. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? Okay. I'll invite any and all of my colleagues that'd like to join me for some proclamations and special recommendations, I mean, special presentations at the desk. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor to invite all the leadership, or anyone really, that's here from the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council here locally, to please come forward and join us. All right, so we have, we've got a big group. I'm going to let you all decide who wants to provide some comments after the proclamation. So whatever, whatever works for you, okay? Come on in, come on in. Ladies and gentlemen, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas October is annually recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas domestic violence affects every person in the city of Tallahassee, either as a survivor of domestic violence, as a family member, significant other, friend, neighbor, or coworker, and domestic violence affects people of all genders, sexual orientations, ages, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups. And whereas domestic violence and intimate partner violence can have lifelong consequences emotionally, mentally, socially, spiritually, and physically. And whereas although progress has been made toward preventing and ending domestic violence and providing support to survivors and their families, there is still a need to provide resources, education, awareness, and understanding of domestic violence and its causes, and important work remains to be done. And whereas policymakers and communities must work together to transform the conditions that cause domestic violence and support survivor-centered solutions. And whereas this year's National Domestic Violence Awareness Month theme, "Everyone Knows Someone," personifies our commitment to serving domestic violence survivors by acknowledging, invigorating, and rededicating ourselves to the goal of eliminating domestic violence for everyone. And whereas the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council, the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, the WACE Center for Women and Girls, and many other community partners, programs, professionals, and advocates of nonviolence have joined together with the Refuge House to support each other in our work and to provide Tallahassee and our citizens with a well-coordinated community response to domestic violence. And whereas during the month of October, the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council and its many partners will be intensifying efforts to promote public understanding of family violence and increase sensitivity to survivors of family violence, emphasizing the need for citizen involvement in efforts to reduce family violence through public education and changing public attitudes. Now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, read into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed with my signature, John E. Daley, dated October 16th, 2024. The Coordinating Council does such incredible work in our community, and we cannot tell you how much we appreciate everything that you do in the, in the goal of ending domestic violence and setting the example, quite frankly, nationally. So it's my honor and my privilege to present this proclamation. There we go. Wonderful. And Kelly, I'd love to invite you to say a few words.
Thank you so much.
Anyone, actually.
I'm Kelly O'Wark. I am the current Director of the Domestic Violence Council. And just so you know what we are, we were created, actually, by the city and county commissions years ago to make sure that we had a well-coordinated community response. So we have all the agencies in town that work with survivors and also perpetrators, and we meet once a month to make sure that we all know each other, nothing's fallen through the cracks, everybody's getting taken care of, and we can solve problems together for anything that's falling through. And the other thing we do is a lot of education and awareness. So thank you all for recognizing us and for recognizing that it's a very, very important month. And this lets survivors know, number one, that the whole community is here for them. It's all of us together. It's not just a woman's problem or a girl's problem. It's an everybody problem. And this also lets the perpetrators know that we see you, and you will be held accountable by our wonderful law enforcement officers as well. So thank you very much. Let me introduce Emily Mitchum from Refuge House, which is the heart of what we do.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Emily Mitchum. I'm the Executive Director of Refuge House. We are the certified domestic violence services provider for Leon and seven surrounding counties here in the Big Bend. We have two emergency hotlines that we offer, one here and one in Taylor County. We have two emergency shelters, one in Leon, one in Taylor County. We have counseling and injunction assistance in all of our eight counties throughout the Big Bend area. We also have a very robust, a very unique program at the Leon County Courthouse for injunction assistance there that's kind of just, just a refuge house and not something that's offered statewide. We also have a very large transitional housing program, which we'll be expanding on very shortly, and all of our services are free and confidential to survivors. So thank you all for coming out and supporting Domestic Violence Awareness Month and for the DVCC. Thank you.
Okay, for our second proclamation, it's my honor to invite our friends from Jones Construction and Design and anyone else that is here for Careers in Construction Month, to please come forward and come join me. So let me tell you, this is an honor and privilege to present this proclamation, but it's also got a great story. Because for months, we have been working side by side to build the first Florida Capitol, which I'll touch on later on in the meeting, and they've been coming out and volunteering their hours, and it's been absolutely fantastic. And again, we'll give a plug for that later. But for now, it's my honor and my privilege to present this proclamation. And again, I'll let you all decide who wants to speak. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas Careers in Construction Month is an annual month designated to increase public awareness and appreciation of construction trade professionals and the entire construction workforce. And whereas during this month, employers, associations, and schools are encouraged to conduct job fairs, panel discussions, and local community events to inform students of the vast employment opportunities in construction. And whereas the construction industry is one of our nation's largest industries, employing more than 5 million individuals in the United States, and whereas the construction industry needs 1.9 million new craft professionals by 2025, and whereas we are pleased to honor the construction craft professionals and the critical role they play in the development of our city, and whereas through a collaborative effort that reaches policymakers as well as local educators and high school students, our goal is to effectively address some of the issues that have contributed to chronic labor shortages and misperceptions of careers in construction to develop a skilled workforce for the future. And whereas the building industry is dedicated to enriching the educational experience of students by offering them firsthand exposure to the real world of the building industry, the organizational membership, educational programming, and networking opportunities. And whereas the goal of the Careers in Construction Month initiative is to shift the public's negative perception about careers in the construction industry and provide opportunity awareness for the individuals who want to become trade professionals. Now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize October as Careers in Construction Month, read into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed with my signature, John E. Daley, dated October 16th, 2024. It is my honor and privilege to present you with this proclamation.
Hello, everybody. My name is Emma Alton Dorf. I'm the Executive Officer of the Building Industry Association of the Big Bend here in Tallahassee. The construction industry plays a vital role in our society, shaping our cities and infrastructure. However, there is a growing shortage of skilled workers in this field. By promoting Careers in Construction Month, we can inspire more individuals, consider a career in the construction, and help this bridge, help bridge this gap. Thank you.
Anyone else? No more. Ladies and gentlemen, we have very special guests here today, and instead of trying to list every agency that is present, I would like to recognize, I want you all to come up. I want to recognize the Capital Regional Real-Time Crime Center for an award that has been received. I would like to ask all of our community partners to please come forward. Let's pack the front of the chambers. And I do apologize that I did not also acknowledge at the beginning of the meeting, the High Sheriff, Walt McNeil, is with us as well. It's good to see you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, before I, before I read what the award is about, a couple of personal comments. First and foremost, public safety is obviously the top priority of our community, whether it's the city, whether it's the county, school board, university, community, state government, federal government, and this is the face. These are the men and women of our law enforcement community that work hand in hand each and every day to help keep us safe, and we certainly do appreciate all the hard work that you do. I tell people all the time that, yes, we have political bickering, and I get that. That's the politics. But we live in a community where the law enforcement community is seamless, and not every community benefits from that. You can go to other communities where the relationship may be between the sheriff's office and the local police departments is not as strong, but here it is very strong. And personally, I'm very appreciative of that. I also want to put a face on some of the first responders, and I'm going to ask chief and the deputy chiefs of the fire department to please stand up too, and any members of the fire department that are here, because these are the men and women who responded to help keep us safe after Helene, after every storm. And I was giving a speech the other day, and what I don't know if you realize is that many of the men and women from these departments, whether it's state level or the local level, worked really hard to keep us safe during Helene. And then when we were able to put our community back, many of them went home, spent a little time with their family, and then woke up the next day, checked over all the equipment, gassed back up, and they went over to Taylor County, because Taylor County got hit really hard over there in the Big Bend area. And then they came home, and they gassed up, spent a little time with their family, and many of the representatives from these agencies, including Tallahassee Police Department, police officers, and the Urban Search and Rescue Team, Task Force Seven of the fire department, went down to South Florida to help our neighbors down in Central and South Florida. And as you can imagine, the past three weeks have been very difficult on top of, and the sheriff's department sent as well, I'm sorry, Sheriff, maintaining the day-to-day operations here, but helping the other communities. And personally, I want you to know how, how honored I am to be able to work with each and every one of you. Thank you very much. But the reason why we are here today is to celebrate the Capital Regional Real-Time Crime Center, the CRR TCC, for receiving the Center of the Year Award from the National Real-Time Crime Center Association for Excellence in Multi-Agency Collaboration and Innovation. With us today are the CRR TCC's co-directors, analysts, and members of the executive leadership team, along with the participating agencies. The CRR TCC was established in 2023 by the Tallahassee Police Department, the Leon County Sheriff's Office, the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, Florida State University Police Department, and the Florida State University College of Criminology and Criminal Justice. The CRR TCC, by the way, the College of Criminology and Criminal Justice is the number one program in the United States of America, let me just say. The CRR TCC provides real-time support to law enforcement using advanced technology and rapidly shares critical information to improve officer response, officer response times, ensure community safety, and aid in criminal investigations. And in two short years, the CRR TCC's cutting-edge technology and collaborative efforts have positioned it as a nationwide leader among real-time crime centers. Ladies and gentlemen, again, it's my honor and privilege to present to you the leadership and the participating agencies of our local real-time crime center and now nationally award-winning real-time crime center. Thank you all very much. Okay, now this is where it gets a little tricky, because not everybody can speak, but I'm going to start with the co-directors from Leon County Sheriff's Office, Leslie Rabon, and then TPD Lieutenant George Kramer, that serves as the co-directors. Are they here, and would you like to provide any comment? Please. Y'all, y'all are the bosses. Hey, and congratulations, by the way. Absolutely.
Well, I'm Lieutenant Travis Burdrun. Obviously, I'm not Lieutenant George Kramer. He's standing in the back. He's much shorter than I am. I recently retired from Tallahassee Police Department. I remained on as a reserve officer. My heart is near and dear to what we're doing here today, whether it's public safety or the CRR TCC. It's been an honor and privilege to be part of the build-out of this program, and I want to thank the mayor and the city commission for this recognition and all their support through this, as well as the county commission, FSU leadership, our School of Criminology and Criminal Justice, Dean Blomberg, and his staff, and his professors, Brian and Julie. This is truly an innovative center that we have developed. And I, again, am such an honor and privilege to be part of such a team, I wanted to stay on as a reserve officer with the Tallahassee Police Department to continue my participation with everyone that you see here. And some, they're not here today because they either worked last night and are home in bed sleeping so that we could be safe while, while we're all home in bed sleeping during, during the regular business hours that they are not. So just to say how it all started out, it was truly a difficult task during COVID, and through our leadership at all the participating agencies, we were able to make this happen and build this center out together and housed together. It's very innovative that we all worked together. As they went to the CRR, or to the NRTCC, National Real-Time Crime Center Association Conference, where this award was presented, we had larger agencies working with our representatives out there, asking us what we're doing in Tallahassee, Florida. Los Angeles Police Department, for example, one of the largest police departments in the United States of America is asking the CRR to see how we are doing things here in Tallahassee. The collaborative effort is very unique, how we work with FSU Police Department analysts, Tallahassee Police Department analysts, Leon County Sheriff's Department analysts, in the same room to help all of those responding agencies and those officers and deputies as they respond to calls for service. Again, honor and privilege. Thank you for your recognition. Honored to be part of this. Leslie?
Good afternoon. My name is Leslie Raven. I am currently one of the directors at the Capital Region Real-Time Crime Center, and I just want to say thank you to this entire team. Thank you to our leadership. Thank you to our research partners. Thank you to the city and county. Thank you to everyone that has backed this, and just know that we are making a difference, but also we're creating a new standard. And that standard is going to come right here back to Tallahassee, and our goal is to now set an even higher bar. But I cannot do that without this amazing team of analysts and this amazing leadership team that supports us. And I just want to say thank you, and thank you to the citizens for supporting what we do.
Okay, without missing anyone, I know we have the sheriff, we have Chief Revel, we have Chief Malloy, we have the acting director, acting secretary of FDLE. Would anybody else like to provide comment? Dr. Brumberg, please. Congratulations.
That's what you call violent tolls.
Absolutely.
I am a professor and a dean, so if you're ready, I'll go ahead and provide a lecture for the sheriff. We have Kyle Clark in the back of the room, who has been instrumental in pulling this together, along with our former president, John Thrasher. It's just been, again, a collaborative effort. The college is proud to be a part of this. We're evaluating, we're doing research. We're going to make this city one of the safest cities ever, and it's just a, it is a partnership, and it's just something that we, we love being a part of. So again, there's no one agency, no one person. It is, as Leslie said, it is a collaborative wonder, and I'm still amazed at how well we're all working together. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, if you'll try to position for a photo, a couple of comments. Again, Dean, congratulations on being literally the best in the country with, with the college, and we certainly do appreciate everything that you do and whatnot. Vice President Clark, just want you to know how much we appreciate our relationship with Florida State, and thank you for everything that you do as well. No problem. Great job. Okay, while we are... For the last presentation that we have today, Stephanie, where are you? Stephanie, come join us down front. Stephanie Swisco is the Executive Director of the Florida Chapter of the American Planning Association, and Stephanie has a very special, I'm not going to steal your thunder, I'm just going to turn the podium over to you. It's all you, absolutely.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Swisco. I am with the Florida Chapter of the American Planning Association, and I would like to invite Devin Levens and his team up. So in honor of, October is also National Planning Month, and in honor of that, I would like to present officially this award to the city of Tallahassee. So each year, the American Planning Association, we have project awards, leadership awards that we do for our conference, and that conference takes place every year in August or September. And I am pleased that we were able to give them the Award of Excellence for the South Side Action Plan this year, and this is actually the fifth consecutive year that the city of Tallahassee has won an award from APA Florida. So very proud of that for them. And Devin, if you would like to say a few words, here you are, sir. Thank you. Congratulations.
You guys know I get excited, and I want to talk all the time about what we're doing on the South Side, but I don't think I can tell you as much as I could show you what's happening on the South Side, so we have a video that we want to show.
Roll that B footage.
Excellent job. One request, we have a CRA meeting tomorrow. I think it would be appropriate to show that video tomorrow also during the, during the meeting as well, because that truly highlights a lot of the great work. I want to thank the team. Y'all do an amazing job, and thank you very much, once again, for being recognized for your excellence. Absolutely. How about a picture? Well, I could not think of a better way to start off the meeting than with those two Well, I could not think of a better way to start off the meeting than with those two proclamations and recognizing those two awards. Many of you will notice that we're also wearing pink. This is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Next week at our City Commission meeting, we will be recognizing formally Breast Cancer Awareness Month in proclamation as well. Okay, moving right along. Mr. Manager, do we have any announcements to come before the City Commission today?
No, sir.
All right. Do we have any appearances by other governmental entities before us today?
No, sir.
We are on the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled off the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Items 11, I'm sorry, 801 and 802 have been pulled at the request of Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter, respectively, and have been renumbered as items 901 and 902 on your agenda.
Okay. 901 and 902. Any other items need to be pulled? See none. Before we get to that point, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Okay, sounds great.
Move consent, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Consent agenda has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are now on item 9.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time of the year, the commission typically adopts the meeting schedule for the following calendar year. Item 9.01 is that item is seeking your approval of the proposed 2025 City Commission meeting schedule. This item was pulled for Commissioner, by Commissioner Matlow for discussion.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on 9.01?
We do not.
Okay, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this item. It's a reduction in the number of meetings that we have each year and a break from the past. And I don't think, a lot like our conversations that have blueprint less meetings really serves the body well. I think it has the opposite effect. I would like to see us maintain a schedule similar to last year. You know, I also have concerns about the timing of items coming out if we're only meeting once a month versus typically every other week to line up introductions of ordinances. And just generally, I think it'll slow government down pretty significantly if we meet less. So, you know, I would like to see us return to the previous meeting schedule.
Okay. Any other comment? Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, Mr. City Manager, if you could give us some background on why there's a, why there are fewer meetings?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. The proposed calendar involves 12 regular meetings and four workshop meetings, 16 in total. It includes two meetings in September and no meetings in July. So generally, it lays out like that. When we recommend the calendar, we look at the work that happened this year, kind of the pace of the work, the volume of work at the meetings. And so that's kind of how we look at it to make sure you meet the needs of the City Commission, that things are coming timely, things are being approved. And that's the basis of our recommendation.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to agree with Commissioner Matlow. I don't, I don't support taking away meetings. I think that in general, two meetings a month makes sense, especially when we think about the fact that we can only meet under sunshine, we can only talk under sunshine. So for us to only have one opportunity to meet, and not only for us to meet, but for the public to speak, is concerning to me. And I think this item, frankly, should never have been on consent because the public don't, I think this should have had discussion, not only from the commission, but the, but the public to meaningfully engage. So I have concerns. There are plenty of items that I've expressed that I'm waiting on, that we're waiting on to discuss. So I don't think there's a lack of material for us to discuss or a lack of issues in the community that need to be addressed, a lack of ideas that we have, that the community has. I think it's always appropriate to cancel meetings if we want to, if we feel that's appropriate. But I just don't think that this is the direction we need to be going in.
Any other comment? Direction?
Move, I move the acceptance of staff recommendation.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Commissioner Porter, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'll make a substitute motion that we, we follow, that we have at least 15 meetings, which I believe is what we had this year. And I think we cut meetings this year from previous years even. Typically, we've had two meetings a month. Of course, there are breaks and exceptions for that. But I think that I would move that my substitute motion would be that we schedule at least 15 meetings for next year.
Second.
Okay, so there is a substitute. Currently, we're at, how many meetings, Mr. Manager?
12.
The proposed is 12 regular meetings with four workshops.
Sure.
So 16 meetings.
Okay, so the substitute motion is for 15 regularly scheduled meetings in four workshops, correct?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Matlow. I'm inclined to support the original motion on the table. I understand. And I do believe that it's easier with public record announcement and making sure that everybody knows it's easier for us to schedule meetings versus if we advertise a meeting and then decide we do not need it. But we've already advertised it, we still have to hold the meeting. So, you know, I'm completely open that if we do have a process that requires more meetings, we can always add more meetings to the schedule. But I am comfortable with the original motion that's on the table, knowing that if we need to add more, we can add more. This is, by the way, colleagues, the same practice that the county commission does, which they for years have met once a month and been able to take care of the business as well. So substitute motion on the table made by Commissioner Porter, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. All those in favor of the substitute signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, and the motion fails. Two to three with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and Commissioner Williams Cox in dissent. We're back on the original motion. Any other comment?
Let me.
Commissioner Williams Cox?
Since I made the motion. I believe the purpose of our meetings are to give guidance and policy directions for staff to do the work, also to hear from our community residents. If the city manager and his staff have looked at the work to be done and believe that they can get this work done without us coming together to meet, then I'm fine with that. What they can also do is that if there is a need, like you said, they can add meetings, but you can also add it to the agenda for the next meeting. And this also will give us a more opportunity to have, opportunity to go into the community and meet with our residents. Our residents will not be short sighted by being, having access to their commissioners. We are still, many of us are still in the community and available to hear, see, and meet wherever need be. Not, it doesn't have to always be here at City Hall.
Yes.
By phone, by email, by text, by whatever means. We are not short circuiting our responsibility or representation. I make myself very accessible. So I do, I do not have to have multiple meetings here to meet my responsibility with the, with the public. So I'm comfortable with the number of meetings that the city manager and his staff have determined are necessary to do the work that needs to be done. We, we as a commission have been together now for many years. And we've worked with the city manager and they've been able to get the work done, moving our city forward. And so I trust and believe that if there is a need to add meetings, we can do that. So I'm comfortable with the recommended change.
We have the Mayor Pro Tim and Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And there's not much more that I can add to what Commissioner Williams Cox has said. You know, I've been on the commission for 10 years now. And there has not been a time when we haven't had an opportunity, especially for the public, to address this commission. And I think that it is appropriate that if, that the city manager look at the workload and what needs to be accomplished and bring a recommendation to us as he has today. I'm inclined to support that. As has been said, if there are times we need to add meetings, we can certainly do that. But it's a lot more difficult to not meet if you've already advertised the meeting and the public expects us to be here. I too, like Commissioner Williams Cox, makes my, I make myself available in the community all the time. As a matter of fact, one of the things that people say about me is I'm everywhere all the time. And the reason for that is, I want people to be able to have my ear where they are. Not that they have to come to City Hall to meet with me or have their issue addressed. Not that they have to call me on the telephone and hope that I will answer or return a call. But they see me in the community. And I can't tell you how many issues I have gotten resolved because I'm where people are and they bring those issues to my attention. I get with the city manager and they're taken care of. So I don't think that there will be, if, if, if we're serving the public like we're supposed to be serving the public, there won't be any shortage of opportunities for the public to be able to give us the input that they would like to give us on, on issues that would come before the commission. So that's why I'm going to support the motion that's on the table.
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make the distinction between, of course, we're all out in the community, listening to our neighbors and addressing those concerns. And nothing is stopping us from doing that work outside of City Hall. But City Hall and during these meetings is our only opportunity to speak amongst ourselves about policy and about a vision for our city. As it is, I don't feel like we really are able to take the time to have more open-ended, bigger, longer-term vision discussions because oftentimes we have stacked meetings. There's a lot on our meetings and no one wants to spend six or seven hours doing the business. And then we get to sharing of ideas and we're all ready to go, not just us, but the public, who's been here a really long time. So I absolutely feel it does a disservice to the public. It does a disservice to us as a commission. We are constantly, step by step, just ceding our power over to staff. And I'm grateful to hear that the city manager is responsive to your emails and your calls when you find issues in the community. But not all of us have that same privilege. And so this is, I mean, and frankly, I'll just say, this, this notion that we can add more meetings if we want, in theory, that's true. I don't have any confidence that if I want an extra meeting, that I'm going to get the support to schedule an extra meeting to, to talk about an issue that's, that's important to the community that I, that I think we need to talk more about. So I don't really see the harm in three more meetings that are scheduled. As it is, one of the biggest complaints I hear from residents is that they didn't know and that they wish they had had more time. Not only, not just to oppose something, but to understand it so that we can work together and find consensus and compromise. I think that's in the best interest of residents and it's in the best interest of neighborhoods, of businesses, of developers. And that there couldn't be the kind of compromise to just add three meetings is disappointing, but not, I guess, not surprising. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, yeah, I'll echo that. I just think the, the business of this board can only happen in this chambers or at regularly scheduled board meetings. I think we all do, work in our community. But that's not the work that we're elected to do, which is to come here and place votes and move the direction of the city. So based on, on what the job is, it's to show up and direct the goings ons of the city. I think, I think we need to be here. And I think sending a message to the public, if they do have an issue that they have to wait 30 days before we have a new board meeting is untenable for me. I think when we only give a week's notice of an agenda item coming out and they miss that, then that's five weeks before they have an opportunity to come and speak on an issue. And frankly, and I think in a year when a city commission is asking for a pay raise, to also say they want to do less work is not going to be receivable by our constituents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, on point.
On point.
Mr. Commissioner Matlow, that was a very low blow.
Man.
Because the work does not happen in here. Decisions are made here. The work happens out there. And while you may have time to do this work and run your business, some of us don't have time to do anything but do this work. And so that's a very low blow. I do not appreciate it. And it was not necessary.
Let me bring this in for, but we've got a motion on the table that was made by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox, or vice versa, did I get that right?
Vice versa.
Vice versa. Motion made by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And it passes 3-2 with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. We're on 9.02. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this item was pulled by Commissioner Porter for discussion. It seeks the commission's approval for the award for weed control services and authorize me or my designated negotiated contract with Kimpro Services Incorporated. These services are for our electric and gas utility there specifically for our power plant areas and our substation areas.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if Mr. City Manager, if you could speak to what kind of chemicals are being used and what oversight we have over that and what concerns and just what due diligence have we done for what's, what we control.
Mr. Manager?
Methods they're using.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner, this, the reason we take this approach is for the very questions you ask. We do a lot of self-performance and maintenance at our power plant substations using our staff. In this case, we use licensed professionals to make sure they're using the proper chemicals, not something that we're not experienced in. These particular chemicals would be to kill the weeds. In all the areas we're talking about, where there's no vegetation allowed, so it's not trimmed or mowed. These would be vegetative free areas. And so historically, we've taken this approach to make sure that trained professionals are using the chemicals. I don't know which ones they're using, but obviously they're licensed and having the following regulation that they're obligated to. And, and so that's the very questions you ask is the reason we take this approach, to make sure it's done properly.
Commissioner Porter, follow up?
Thank you. That, those were my only questions.
All right. Any other comment?
Move staff recommendation.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on City Commission Appointments, 10.01. Mr. Treasurer Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10.01 recommends ratification of the appointment or reappointment of seven individuals to the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Each of those being recommended is either one of the members of the city commission's appointee or at-large from the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls itself. So those seven individuals are Mayor Daley's appointee, a reappointment of Adela Gadini, Commissioner Williams Cox's appointee, reappointment of Anika Williams, Commissioner Richardson's appointee, reappointment of Judy Mandrell, appointment at large, Michaela Denny, appointment at large, Amanda Lighty, reappointment at large, Ashley Gilli, and reappointment at large, Hyasha Fortson.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Madam Attorney, can we, if the board is willing and interested, can we do it with one motion? Or do you want us to go seat by seat by seat?
I think we can do it by one motion.
All right, let's see where the direction is.
Yes, unless there's.
Where we go. Let's open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tim?
Move staff recommendation on the appointment of those individuals that have been outlined by the Treasurer Clerk to the Board of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, of which I am the commission's liaison.
Okay. Motion has been made for staff recommendation for all appointments for seat two, seat three, seat four, seat 15, seat 16, seat 17, and seat 18, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Commissioner Matlow, did I see your hand?
No.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We're on item number 10.02. Mr. Treasurer Clerk?
Mayor and Commissioners, this item recommends reappointment of two individuals to the Environmental Board. Those individuals are Frank Powell to seat three and Nadine Gordon to seat four.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
And these are reappointments, correct?
Correct.
All right, let's open it up for discussion and direction.
Move staff recommendation option number one.
Second.
Staff recommendation for option number one for seat number three and seat number four reappointments has been made by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Mr. Treasurer Clerk, do we have any other appointments to come before this board?
Not tonight, sir.
All right, we are on the introduction of ordinance, 11.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-33, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leyton County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from the residential preservation land use category to the suburban land use category for .0.93 acres at 1932 Mikkasuki Road, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-0-33 and set the first and only public hearing for October 23, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Now, out of these seven items that we're about to go through, are any of them quasi-judicial?
Yes, the ones that towards the end.
Okay, and make sure that you bring that up.
I will, yes, sir.
So that if anybody has anything to report, they can. Do we have any public comment on 11.01?
We do not.
Okay, so the recommended action is simply the introduction, reading into the record the proposed ordinance, discussion, motion.
Move. Second.
Properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. 11.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.02 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-34, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leyton County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use map designation from the central urban land use category to the central core land use category for 7.17 acres at the northeast corner of Dewey Street and West Tennessee Street, between West Virginia Street, North Copeland Street, West Tennessee Street, and Dewey Street, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-0-34 and set the first and only public hearing for November 6, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor Richard DeRobie is here to answer questions, otherwise no speakers.
Okay, excellent. Looking for direction.
Move staff recommendation on option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Option number one, which is simply reading the proposed ordinance into the record, has been made by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. 11.03, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.03 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-0-36, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee adopting a small-scale amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leyton County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land map designation from the residential preservation land use category to the central urban land use category for .27 acres at 1104 Old Bainbridge Road, providing for severability and conflicts and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-0-36 and set the first and only public hearing for November 6 at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation, which is simply reading the proposed ordinance into the record, has been made by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 11.04, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.04 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-Z-31, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 1.30 acres located at 1715 Capital Circle Northeast as and in Commercial Parkway CP from Office Residential OR3 on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-Z-31 and set the first and only public hearing for October 23, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Do we have any declarations of ex parte communications? Do we have any discussion or motions?
Move staff recommendation for option number one.
Option number one's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 11.05, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.05 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-Z-32, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as Office Residential 2, OR2, on the official zoning map from residential preservation to RP2 on .93 acres at 1932 Mikkasuki Road, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-Z-32 and set the first and only public hearing for October 23, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No speakers on this item.
Colleagues, do we have any declarations of ex parte communications?
No.
Do we have any direction or discussion?
Move staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation has been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 11.06, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.06 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-Z-35, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as Central Core CC on the official zoning map from Central Urban CU45 on 7.17 acres at the northeast corner of Dewey Street and West Tennessee Street, between West Virginia Street, North Copeland Street, West Tennessee Street, and Dewey Street, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-Z-35 and set the first and only public hearing for November 6, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have any declarations of ex parte communications? Commissioner Williams Cox.
I actually have a question.
Okay.
Before we go there, the difference between 11.06 and 11.02, that's the same area.
Yes.
Okay, so one is a small amendment in that area. I know the area. Just trying to make sure that even the public understands why these sound so similar and so familiar.
One is land use and one is zoning. Yes.
Okay, Mr. Wyatt, are you going to handle that question for us?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioners. The answer is the first one was for changing of the comprehensive plan, future land use map.
Mm-hmm.
And that is implemented through the zoning code. And so the second one is the changing of the zoning atlas.
Okay.
So it's the same project, same location, just one is the future land use map and one is the zoning atlas.
Okay. So I did receive a call from someone to see if I had any questions about this, and so I will file the necessary paperwork, because I did not have any questions, but it was just that quick conversation about if there were any questions.
Excellent. Any other declarations? No. All right, direction, comments?
Move staff recommendation option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by the mayor pro temp for staff recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We're on item number 11.07, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.07 is the introduction of ordinance number 24-Z-37, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as Central Urban 18, CU18, on the official zoning map from residential preservation 2, RP2, on .27 acres at 1104 Old Bainbridge Road, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. The recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 24-Z-37 and set the first and only public hearing for November 6, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Any declarations of ex parte communications? Directions, discussion?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved for staff recommendation, the introduction of the ordinance into the record by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney, do we have any other proposed ordinances to be introduced this evening?
We do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Hey, good job. That was a good job. Appreciate you. Okay, we're on policy formation and direction, 12.01. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Let me put some frame on this. I'm going to ask Thomas Whitley to come forward. He's our Director of Operations and Innovation. He'll walk us through this. But it seems like it was a long time ago, but it wasn't, when we were impacted by Hurricane Helene. And in fact, I'm reminded of something my friend Vince Long would say, is that every story has a beginning, a middle, and an end. And I would say the Hurricane Helene was the beginning. And then pretty quickly after that, we've had Hurricane Milton. That was the middle, but we're not done yet. There's an end. In fact, hurricane season lasted until the end of November. And so tonight, what I would like Thomas to do is walk us through our response to Hurricane Helene. The mayor's already mentioned some of the continuation, which was as we finished our work, we went to help others. And then when Milton came, we sent a really big contingent. And our emergency management coordinator, Brian Bradshaw, is here. He just got back from his deployment, so the end will be, we're still watching the tropics. And so, Thomas, let me turn it over to you to give the presentation.
Dr. Whitley. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. Of course, we remember, though, as the manager said, it does feel a bit like a lifetime ago that Helene came and hit us. We were thankfully spared the worst, as we know and experienced here, but we know that Helene was a very powerful storm, second deadliest in this century to make landfall in the U.S. with 228 confirmed deaths so far. It made landfall roughly 50 miles southeast of Tallahassee. You may have seen, we had a graphic in the agenda item that hopefully you saw that showed power outages by county on a heat map. And what you could see is where the eye went, it was 100%. 36 hours after landfall, still 100% of those counties out of power. We were at that point less than 10%. We had surpassed 90% grid restoration within 36 hours of the storm leaving our area as soon as it was safe to do so. And I'll talk a little bit more about the preparation and the response that we had, but I think it's important to know that part of why we were able to respond that quickly is Tony's team, of course, and Steve Schaefer's team, and both Chief Sanders, Chief Revel, UPI, Community Beautification and Waste Management, everybody was ready. You know this. We, of course, were keeping you informed. By the time, by the day that the storm hit, we had mutual aid from nine states already here. Ultimately, we had 228 electric mutual aid crews in town from 10 different states to help. And so we were pre-staging personnel, we were pre-staging resources. And in the early morning hours, hopefully you were still asleep, what we had is we had crews going out immediately, starting to clear roads the second it was safe to do so. We had scouting crews from electric going out to determine the extent of the damage so that when the larger equipment was able, was safe to go out, and we had the full complement of resources to begin restoring power, they were able to hit the ground running, literally. And so we are quite well-practiced at this. Some things will pell in comparison now. I think we have a new benchmark with the May 10 tornadoes, the damage that it did to our electric grid. But with Helene even being spared, we had 58 broken poles, over 18,000 feet of downed wires, six damaged substations, 66 damaged transformers, nine damaged transmission lines, and 46 circuits were replaced. And so the response from the organization was massive. We had over 2,500 city employees engaged at some level in response to recovery efforts. So that's not just the linemen that you think about that are going up in buckets. That's the control center folks that are supporting them. That's folks who are booking hotel rooms, or linemen for mutual aid folks, serving them. That is our procurement officials who are making sure that Tony and his crews, they need to spend a lot of money, which, by the way, they do, that they have the procurement ability in an emergency like that to be able to make sure that they get the equipment necessary, they have the resources. We had our traffic engineering folks pre-deploying generators at all tier one and most tier two intersections so that if you drove through in the early morning hours, mid-morning, the next morning, on the major thoroughfares, it kind of looked like nothing happened because our crews had already been out clearing roads. And even if you could tell that power was out all around it, we had safe movement of traffic because of the good work that happened there. Our airport served and continues to as a logistical staging area leading up to it in response as well. I'm proud that within 12 hours of landfall, the airport was open and fully operational again. Because we know that one of the most important things that we can do is ensure that the community can get back to normal as quickly as possible. And so that's our roads, that's our airports, that's our traffic signals, everything. Our customer operations team fielded almost 7,000 calls, 15,000 digital requests. So you understand the scale even when we talk about being spared by Helene. And with the immense preparation allowing us to respond as quickly as we did, we were able to then turn around very quickly, as the mayor mentioned earlier, send crews over to Taylor County, water and wastewater crews, electric crews to help with Helene response efforts there. Many of them came home and turned around very quickly and went down to central Florida. And so we had a large contingent, less than two weeks later, when Milton hit the state and ripped across the center of the state, a large contingent of mutual aid crews there from electric and gas, 26 folks with bucket trucks, line trucks, trailers, our water and wastewater crews, taking boom trucks, service trucks, flatbed trailers as well, our fire department, urban search and rescue team going down, our EOC folks going to Sawani and going down to St. Pete, TPD, we're familiar with that. And our fleet is a group that we don't often see them posted on our social media. Actually, we do, Allison does a great job. But we do a lot of, a lot of people are thanking linemen, they're thanking our first responders as they should, but we have fleet embedded with them as well. And this is one of the best practices that we've developed over the years with our storm response, both here and when we send mutual aid. And so they're there to make sure that these large trucks that are made to drive around our community, they're not made to drive over the road, that when they have issues, they can get them back up and running as quickly as possible. We know the fuel shortage issues in central Florida, so they were there, fuel trucks and fuel trailers, make sure that we can be there and actually be a help and not be a hindrance. So we are well-practiced at this, and we had an exceptional response thanks to the preparedness efforts, which I think is a testament to the leadership that we have, of course, under the manager and the teamwork and professionalism that we see from top to bottom in this organization. And as the manager said, the story's not over. Hurricane season is not over, and so if Brian Bradshaw's going to come up, we are watching a couple of systems. And I hate to say it, but we maintain kind of a state of operational readiness, and Brian will give us an update.
Brian, before you begin, I just want to personally thank you. A lot of people don't understand that you are the man behind the emails that keep us updated, especially as the storms are approaching. I think you do a phenomenal job. I know you work hand-in-hand with the county EOC along with, obviously, the leadership team. Thank you. You do a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're currently watching two systems in the Atlantic and the Caribbean. We'll talk about the one in the Caribbean real quick first. It's near the Yucatan Peninsula, has only a 20% chance of development over the next seven days. seven days. Most of the guidance is leading us to believe that this system will drift over into Central America, maybe fall into the Pacific Ocean. We don't really believe that one to be a threat at this time. The other one I'm going to talk about is Invest 94L or AL, which is out in the Atlantic, sort of located about several hundred miles east of the Leeward Islands. This one is drifting westward over the Leeward Islands. It has about a 40% chance over the next seven days of development. This system's going to be heavily influenced by a high that's currently sitting over the southeast. That's why when we go outside today, you have bluebird skies, and it's pretty outside with breezy. That's that high that's sitting over us. That's going to cause this system to either sharply turn to the north, or if the system develops a little bit lower in the southern region of that area, it could scoot along the western, southern Caribbean or through the Caribbean. If that system gives out, or the high that we're sitting under right now were to retreat, then that would allow that system to sort of pull up into the Gulf. Questions? Thank you.
All right, before we get into, or Dr. Whitley, I'm sorry, any follow-up, closing? We're good. Brian, just hang tight. Do we have any public comment on this item before we get into discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, let's open it up for discussion. This is an informational only, so there's no proposed motion except for to accept the report unless we want different direction. I've got Commissioner Porter first, and then Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you, Brian, and everyone who's here and who's listening, who's been a part of the response. I'm really always amazed and proud of how we do respond, and I can't thank you enough. I have a question, and that is, what kind of financial impact does the storm response take? How are our reserves? What are we expecting for future, for the next two months? Or just, just general ballpark? I know we can't predict the future, but you know, what are, what are we looking at? And I know with FEMA reimbursements, just could you give me a broad overview?
Thomas, let me, let me take a stab at that. Commissioner, it's a good question. And I think, again, time seems like it goes really fast and long, but just within the last six months, we were impacted by the tornadoes, and that was extraordinarily expensive. Hurricane Debbie, Hurricane Helene. So these are disasters beyond what we would normally plan for. And those three, we've estimated spending about $70 million, about $50 million on the hurt, I'm sorry, on the tornadoes, $5 million on Debbie, and $15 million on Helene. It's a kind of evolving number, but that's a good estimate. We use our reserves collectively to fund that. We're fortunate to be able to seek some recovery from FEMA, but that often takes years. If you recovered it in three years, that would be fantastic. At last check, we still had some recovery from as long ago as Hermine. And so, it stretches out a long time, it impacts your liquidity. We do have excellent reserve policies, so that has helped us. I mentioned at your budget workshop that, you know, if this pattern continued, and obviously it has, we may need to consider maybe a, you know, one-time replenishment or a temporary replenishment of some of those reserves. You know, we're not at that point of making that recommendation. But I think it does speak to potential need is different today than it was in the past. Our best reserves are in our utility systems. As you know, your general fund reserve slash savings account is not at target, it is expected to reach target when some land sales happen and things of this nature. And so, that's one of your smaller reserves. But this has taxed our ability to fund these storms, but not to the point where we have had to limit our response. Other communities have had to limit response, seek lines of credit, other more difficult measures of financing. We, we're not there, but I do believe it's probably time to, to look forward and say they're more costly, more frequent, we may need to revisit the level, level of reserves we have.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Commissioner Williams Cox and the Mayor Pro Tem.
I just wanted to publicly say thank you. Thank you to the city manager, deputy city manager, assistant city managers, and every person, staffers, who did what needed to be done to get us back. It is just to think how we were bracing for, with Helene, how we were bracing for the worst to happen, and to be able to get our power back up within 24 hours for the most part, that, that's just beyond, you know, that, that, that shows what experience does, people being prepared, knowing what to do, knowing who to, who to put out there, not questioning or playing games, but knowing what to do and how to get it done and how to get it done quickly. It also shows how having good working relationships are important as well, because we're relying on mutual aid to come and assist us. And if you don't have someone who's willing, who's willing and knows how to work with some, some of these entities, that could not happen. My son, who today, my firstborn, who today is his birthday, he turns 47 today.
How about that?
At 2:38 PM.
Uh-oh.
Who's counting?
Uh-oh.
He lives in Fort Pierce. He just got power back yesterday from Milton, yesterday. I told him, I told him and his wife to get to Tallahassee before Milton hit. No, they honked it down, and they were going to be all right. Well, they were without power until yesterday. In Tallahassee, we know what to do. We know how to do it, we know how to get it done quickly, and that's because we have the leadership to make sure that that happens, and we have the staffers and others who know how to come together and collaborate and make this happen. Every, every city of Tallahassee employee participated. And so, I, I appreciate that, and I wanted to just come back, a quick Bible lesson, you know, the Bible says that, I'm looking at Reverend Kimball Thomas right now, that, that the Lord healed 10 lepers, but only one came back to say thank you and got full healing. So I know I'm not the only one, but I want to be one of the ones to come back and say thank you to our leadership, to our city attorney's office, to our treasurer clerk's office, because I know you're going to pay the bills, to our inspector general, because you're going to make sure that you audit your office, things are going, you know, lined up like they're supposed to when it's time to audit what happens. And to every person, every person who participated and made this happen, thank you. And yes, hurricane season ends November 30th, but we're still praying and, and knowing that if something should happen, we got the right people with the right stuff in place to put us back together again. And I, I just can't thank you enough. Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know that there's much I can add to what Commissioner Williams Cox has, has expressed, but I do also want to thank the leadership, our city manager, his executive team, and all of the employees of the city of Tallahassee. I, I can't tell you how proud of each and every one of you I am for what we have come through and come through it with flying colors. And all of us, all of our employees have contributed in one way or another to that success. We've had some experience with it now, Mr. City Manager, and so I think that contributes a lot to our response and how we're able to handle it. But I think we have been a model, certainly for other communities to emulate, in how we have been able to weather the storm, if you will, and come back from it very quickly. The, the one thing that I wanted to bring up, City Manager, and I've had several people, and, and we've heard the conversation throughout the community, but I've had several people ask me about this, are we considering undergrounding our utilities in light of the damage that we've seen and the impact that that has had? I think at some point, we, we may need to have that discussion so we can maybe educate the community about what that could or would look like, how it could happen, because there, there are some of those, some out there who are asking if we're going to consider undergrounding our utilities. And I explain to them, one of the things I do explain to them is that we do require that now of new developments. But I think what they're looking at and inquiring about is maybe retrofitting some of our older neighborhoods in that respect. So I will, Mr. City Manager, if you could kind of give us an idea of, you know, what that would look like, if we need to have that discussion. Mr. Mayor. Commissioner, thanks for the question. As you might imagine, we spend a lot of time talking about that. Tony and his team, Mike Crowe is here, and we've spent just an extraordinary amount of time over the years, decades, talking about, you know, how we make our system more resilient. We're practical, of course. There are lots and lots of limitations of most of what we do. In the case of undergrounding utilities, you mentioned now it's 40 years, all new subdivisions have gone underground. And I think we're nearing about half of our distribution wires are underground, that's a good rule of thumb, and that's a good thing, that, that's helpful. Of course, undergrounding's not a panacea, it has its own issues, but in terms of wind-type storms, it's more resilient. And where we have found success, and credit to Tony and Mike and the team, is we've begun undergrounding strategically where possible. You'll recall even as in Blueprint, you authorized undergrounding of some of the circuit along Magnolia. And so, where we've had opportunity, we've seized upon it, we've worked in and around the campuses to put lines underground. And so, when we've had the opportunity, we do it. We've been somewhat successful in seeking grant funding as well, much like what we've done in our underground utility sidewalk area. We're pursuing that very aggressively right now, because we believe those dollars to be more available today than they probably have been ever that we know of in terms of infrastructure dollars. And so, we're trying to find the ways, for reliability purposes, I juxtapose that to aesthetics. Aesthetics is, you know, good, but it's secondary to the reliability. And so, we, we see a lot of good work. What we know is practically, to underground the entire system is multiple generations, and that, and I don't say that lightly, it would take beyond our lifetimes to, to do the best we could anticipate how long the work would take, and it's multiple billions, it's multiple times the, the value of our current system. So we're, we're, you know, conscientious of that. But so, you know, Tony and Mike and the entire team are working on that. We've talked with our citizens advisory committee about it, they're interested about that. And so, I think, I think we're making good progress, and we're doing it in ways that make sense, and, and we're seeing a difference. In addition to that, if I may, and I apologize for a long answer, it's a great question, it's one that we're talking about internally, and some people are asking us, like you said, the members of the public, it, it's going to continue to be a discussion. What we also know is, most of our outages are tree-related.
Right.
The vast majority of the outages that we experience, especially in windstorms, are tree-related, where the tree falls into the lines or the lines, hits the lines. And so, Tony and team have adopted, you know, a more robust tree trimming program, and that's helping a lot. I think just personally, you, you'll remember, we, and it's circuit by circuit, and we're working on that. So we're doing all those things in combination with the idea of reliability. One of the key metrics that the Electric and Gas Department tracks is duration of outage. And so, that's a, that's a metric that we can see, are we making progress in terms of when you had the outage, how many outages, how long does it take to repair? And so, that's, I appreciate the question, because that's, it's something that's central to our resiliency and our approach and our future, and it's balancing the economics of thing, the practical application of a built environment, how destructive, you know, going back in and digging roads and things like this, but also with the end goal of improving reliability. And, and what I do know is the time to restoration, we just talked about it, nobody can compete with us. I mean, that's just total kudos to Tony and Mike in terms of how fast we can put our system back together. What Thomas didn't say is that the number of outages at peak with Hurricane Helene was the fourth most in the history of the city of Tallahassee as a percentage of customers. Kate, we had less customers but a greater percentage out. It was the fourth most, only preceded by Kate, Hermine, and Michael. And so, we saw this massive impact in terms of volume, and by the next morning, we were over 90% restored. And so, long, long answer, I apologize for the answer, but it's a good opportunity to talk about it. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure I understood Commissioner Richardson's question, because I, and whether it's different from what we talked about a couple of months ago, because we took a vote on whether to have this come back to us for a discussion, and I wanted to know if it was different from that.
I, I think it's, I won't provide comments too. There is some difference, especially some things that opened up on the state level that I'm going to talk about as well, that I think should point in the right direction. But Commissioner Porter, you have the floor still?
Yeah, I mean, I, I supported the motion when it was made a couple of months ago that we have this discussion, just so we have all of the, the facts, because we understand, of course, that it would be incredibly costly and that there may be a way we can do it gradually. And of course, what we want to prioritize is something that will actually make the greatest difference towards reducing the number of outages and not just undergrounding just because we think that that's the best thing to do, we want to do, it's actually going to make everyone safer and, and keep the power on. So I'm, I was interested then, and I'm still interested in having that conversation and to see what our utilities, what we're keeping track of, what data we have, what we're learning. And of course, if there are federal, state opportunities for financing that or partnering, I'd love to learn more about it.
Commissioner Malo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you for the response. And, and I agree with Commissioner Porter, the last time we had this conversation, not too long ago, ultimately, it is a budgetary conversation, as the city manager stated, in excess of a billion dollars to bury the whole system. But I believe the conversation we had is, we need information as, as a commission of where strategically burying lines can reduce outages, and what we can expect to tell the community we have a plan for in five years, in 10 years, 25 years, 50 years of, of where we're going, and, and start laying out how, how we're going to fund that. Because I think, you know, overwhelmingly, we see the storms are going to increase, are going to continue to increase, and at hundreds of millions of dollars, not just in city expenses, but also lost revenue to businesses in our community through long-term power outages. And so, I think we need to have all those metrics in place to, to consider. But again, per our last conversation, I'm still looking for a plan. I, I'm glad that we're recovering quickly. The work has been incredible from, I think, for me and when I think we were all completely blindsided to how rapidly, you know, everybody has got it down, and it's very impressive. The last storm, I heard very few complaints on, on recovery, because most people didn't take that long. But again, I'm looking for what's the plan, how many years, let's look as far out as we need, and start putting the dollars in the appropriate places to, to reduce these outages and make progress. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Is there a motion to accept the report?
Don't move.
Probably move by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. I'll provide comments as well. First and foremost, a lot of thank yous, and I think it starts with the city manager. Risco, under your leadership, you have put together a, an incredible storm response program that starts with the preparation in advance. And every storm that comes through, we learn from it, we build upon it, and you and your leadership team have done an absolutely tremendous job. Dr. Whitley, embedded at the EOC, thank you for everything that you do as well to help the city move forward. Brian, you, you do a tremendous job, you really do. And I'm sure like my colleagues, the public information, when you send us those emails, we share them out as well. And I think that we live in a society where the more information that we can help communicate, people understand what we're doing to prepare moving forward, and then during the storm and after the storm. And certainly do appreciate your communications. Along those lines, Allison Ferris and your PIO team have done a superb job with revamping how we communicate before, during, and after a storm event. Again, we have learned that when people are out of power, as long as they know how we are attacking the issue to restore power, it does provide comfort, and you all do an incredible job. And then, we've had some unsung heroes along the way. Mike Crowe, you and your communications are phenomenal, and it's amazing how people love to hear specifically from the Electric Utility Department and people on the ground. It goes very far, and you do a great job. For the electric utility all the way around, Tony, I, I can't thank you enough. You all do a great job, especially the men and women on the front lines. Again, to bring attention to when the storm hit, over half of this community was knocked offline, and 36 hours later, you had 99% restoration. It is unbelievable, unheard of. And the fact, too, that we live in a community where we're not afraid to ask for help from our neighbors and other municipally-elected municipal electric partners through FMEA speaks well to the preparation of this community. And she's not here, but I do want to recognize Amy Zuboli and her team for coordinating those efforts in advance and all that they do as well. Our first responders, we have members of the fire department that are here. Thank you so much for everything that you do. And I don't know if we have any members from the urban search and rescue team that are actually present, or if they're still deployed. actually present or if they're still deployed, but I can only imagine when we go to other communities along with serving here, the job that, that has to be done, and it is truly appreciated. The members of the police department that go out as soon as it's safe as well to help keep us safe during and after these storms. It's absolutely second to none, and our first responders are second to none. And then we have the unsung heroes of all the utilities, not just the electric utility, the wastewater, the water, the natural gas, you know, stormwater. I'll tell you a story. Commissioner Matlow, Intuan Wiley, works in our stormwater division. He also is the volunteer head football coach for my son at Raw Middle School. So we had a game on Tuesday night, a couple of the coaches actually work for the city. And these guys go out, they're involved with the, the community and whatnot. And we played a football game. They went home at 8:00 o'clock, changed clothes, and went straight out to do storm prep, clear out stormwater systems and stuff. We got all these great stories throughout the community. James Barnes, your center plays such a vital role after the storm, helping to keep people updated as they call in as well. You know, every department has a role to play. Jim, making sure that everybody gets paid, which is seriously very important. That is not something that the employees need to worry about, that the financial system's going to work. Amy, your legal team, making sure that everything is done above board and done well and working in coordination with the manager's office. Our outside partners as well. Kevin Peters, the director of the Leon County Emergency Operations Center, who, Brian, I know you work hand in hand with as well, does an absolutely tremendous job. All of our county partners, the nonprofit community and how they step up after the storm to help out, the business community, the faith-based community. I mean, we live in a great city where everybody has a role to play, and they play it well. I look at the airport that basically was turned into a military base a week ago because we were staging the, the Coast Guard and other military operations for rescue after Milton went through central Florida. We all have a role to play, and we do it well. I also want to go on the record and thank President Joe Biden, and the White House, specifically Intergovernmental Affairs, for staying in constant communication with myself as mayor and with the city, making sure that they knew exactly what we would need through a FEMA response. And it was an honor and a privilege to join all my colleagues and to welcome the president to Tallahassee International Airport as he was deploying to do an aerial tour of Taylor County. I want to thank Governor DeSantis, who stayed in constant communication with his team, with me, making sure that we understood that the state pledged their resources as well. Kevin Guthrie, the state director of the EOC, who is a tremendous partner and lives here in Tallahassee and cares. The Secretary of Department of Transportation that always offers to help with the cut and toss. We have great partners, and one of the reasons why it's important during storms, these are not a partisan event. We work with everybody. We work with the governor's office, we work with state agencies, we work with the White House, we work with the county, the school board, we work with everybody, and it's very important for us to maintain those relationships. In closing, it is time to readdress, and the difference in my mind, Commissioner Porter, is it is a financial issue. So what has happened recently? One of the major things that has happened recently is that you have, the governor's office has opened up the new resiliency program, and I know that we're working hand in foot, and they are strongly encouraging all 411 municipalities across the state of Florida not only to establish their own resiliency program, but they have put money behind it, and there's a significant portion of it. And while we are working on our resiliency program here in Tallahassee, I would strongly encourage us, specifically when it comes to the burying of power lines and the resiliency positive factor that that has on our grid system, that we should seek additional dollars, as much additional dollars as we possibly can. Finally, I would strongly encourage us, as we move into the legislative session, this is the year to ask for a specific appropriation from the Florida Legislature to assist us in burying power lines. We are not going to be able to do this on our own. It is cost prohibitive. If we just use local tax dollars and a grant here and a grant there, I think that our number one priority moving into session is to ask our partners at the state level, who were great partners during this storm, to come to the table financially and work with our legislative delegation for a line item specifically to make our city more resilient and to bury the power lines. That is an issue that will come back to us during the legislative report as we develop our priorities, but I want you to know that that is top of my mind. So everyone, job well done. We have a motion on the table just to accept-
Mr. Mayor, one, one more comment before we go.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
Kudos to you for being on the national scene and the news and letting folks know what was happening here in Tallahassee. I saw you, the city of your, your office has made national news, and you're decor in your office. Glad it was, you know, it was good and clean, like it always is. I was very proud to see you honking in your office, doing what you needed to do. I know that you slept on the sofa in your office to be, to be here in City Hall to do what needed to be done while your family was, was sent to safety, we thought, but the storm found them. And you, you're here trying to do the business of the city, worried about your family and where they were. So thank you for your leadership and for your sacrifice and your service as well.
Thanks for your kind words. Motion on the table to accept the report made by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. 12.02, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You'll recall in September, the city commission directed staff to bring back an item to approve the renaming of a segment of Pasco Street, specifically from Orange Avenue to Bragg Drive, to rename it after Anita Davis. And that's what this item is. This item seeks your approval for the renaming of that portion of Pasco Street in the honor of the late Anita Louise Porter Lyles Davis. As everybody, I hope, knows, Anita Davis served our community for more than 40 years as a community leader, civil rights activist, neighborhood advocate, and humanitarian. Among her many achievements is the serving of, as the president of the NAACP, being the first African-American woman elected to the Board of County Commissioners, and then becoming the first African-American woman to serve as county commission chair. If you approve this item tonight, the segment of Pasco between Orange Avenue and Bragg Drive will officially be renamed Anita Davis Place effective November 12th. John Reddick is our growth management director. He's here to answer questions if you have him.
Okay. Is, are there any public comments?
We do have a couple of speakers on this item, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. The, the first will be Delatrie Hollinger and then Stanley Sims. Mr. Hollinger comes forward. Speaker will have three minutes.
That's Reverend Hollinger.
Reverend.
Delatrie Hollinger, 750 Whale Street, co-executive director of the Florida Civil Rights Museum. I'd like to recognize the family of the late Commissioner Anita Davis, her son Mark Lyles, daughter-in-law Kim Lyles, and grandson Bama Deli Jifus. Thank you all for being here. She was a freedom rider in the 1960s. She helped prisoners in the 1970s. She revitalized the Tallahassee branch of the NAACP in the 1980s. She was an elected official in the 1990s. But Anita Davis was not only a public servant during her service as the first African-American woman elected to the Leon County Commission from 1990 to 1996. She was a public servant at all times and in every facet of her life. She was the first African-American male or female to chair the Board of County Commissioners. She was the first African-American male or female to be elected twice to the county commission. She spent 12 years as the first woman president of the NAACP from 1981 to 1990 and from 2001 to 2002. She filed the lawsuit in 1983, which led to the enactment of single-member districts for county commissioners and school board members. I'd like to speak personally also for a moment, and I can't tell it all in three minutes, but she was a mentor, a godmother, and a dear friend of my family. I was with her when she went shopping and prepared gifts, gift bags and Christmas gifts for the residents of Gibbs Mayberry Village using her own money. I was with her when she encountered people who were homeless or were down on their luck. She would always introduce herself and try to find them resources. She was the ultimate role model. She recruited me to join the Axo Program in the NAACP as a student at Fairview Middle School, and she paid my membership to join the NAACP. I can't tell you the number of times I sat at her dining room table, just gleaning wisdom and conversing with her about the issues in the community that were of great concern, riding on planes and buses with her as a student of the NAACP, riding in her car with her to various meetings and community events. As an 18-year-old fresh out of high school, she endorsed my candidacy for a city commission seat. She cooked the food and invited elected officials, candidates, and her family to my campaign kickoff. When I founded the National Association for the Preservation of African-American History and Culture in 2013, she stepped in to serve as our inaugural board chair and was our first life member. When I began to advocate for a statewide civil rights museum to be located here in the city of Tallahassee, Anita Davis was right here with me in the chambers of City Hall to join in that movement. On the night I became president of the NAACP, she was right there with me every step of the way. I can't tell you how much I miss Anita and Morris Davis. I'd like to thank Commissioner Richardson for your motion and Commissioner Williams Cox for your second, which made this agenda item a reality. I thank God for the blessing of having been able to know and to love Anita Davis.
Thank you.
And I want to thank Gene-
Thank you.
-for making these shirts for the family.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Stanley Sims. Do not see Sims.
Our next speaker?
No other speakers.
All right. So I'll open it up, Commissioner Williams Cox, and then I'll come to Mayor Pro Tem.
Let me, let me say to Delatrie, I too remember sitting at her dinner table, being a younger woman running for office. She was a mentor and advisor. She, she gave me some pointers on some things that I should do. And remember to all, she said, remember to always ask for the money. And we were members of organizations together, Democratic Women's Club, as well as members of Belt and Missionary Baptist Church together. So a phenomenal, phenomenal community asset, community jewel, and I am plum pleased and proud to support this initiative to name part of Pasco Street for Miss Anita Davis.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think I've mentioned to you all before how special Anita was to me. Well, first of all, let me say, her son Mark and I go way back, our FSU days. He was on the football team. I used to watch them play football.
Oh, you didn't play?
I didn't play. So Mark and I have known each other for a long time. But of course, Anita was not only a role model and friend for me, she was my neighbor. They lived in the Jake Gaither neighborhood, and I was just up the road in the Tuskegee neighborhood. But, but if, but for my association with Anita back then as a young up-and-comer in the community, I just graduated from Florida State University and started my professional career, I wouldn't be where I am today. I stepped out on faith in 1988 and ran for the Leon County School Board because I saw then the deficiencies that were in existence in the school district at that time. And we didn't have an African-American on the board during that time. I was new to the community. You people knew me. I didn't know a whole lot about the community, but I knew that something had to be done to change the school system as we knew it back then. And so I stepped out on faith, ran for the school board against a very popular school board member, Emily Millett. Some of you all may remember Emily and know her to this day. She and I are the best of friends even to this day. And it wasn't against her, but it was for what I thought needed to be done at the time. And of course, I lost that election. And, but then Anita came to me because she had just worked to get the county commission to go to single-member districts. And so she and I talked, and, and we had conversation with the school board and Delatrie, rather than them go the legal route and spend all the money that would have been required and time as the county had done, they agreed to go to single-member districts voluntarily. And then in 1990, as she was being elected to the county commission, I was elected to the school board, and the rest is history. And here I am today. And so Anita just meant so much to me personally and certainly politically that I am so honored to be able to recognize her this way so that her name and legacy will live in perpetuity. And so with that, I would like to move, Mr. Mayor, that we accept option one as recommended by staff to name that portion of Pasco Street. And ironically-
Second. Option number one has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. I am going to ask without objection, that'd be a unanimous second?
Yes.
Unanimous second?
Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Hollinger and the family for, for bringing this forward. I know public service is a sacrifice, not just for the individual who serves, but the entire family. So this is a, a, a great honor. I'm happy to be on the commission to be able to vote for it, but also just my gratitude for, for sharing your family with us and our community. Thank you.
Excellent. Any further comments? Yeah, I want to say a formal welcome to the family here to Chambers on this very special night. Anita Davis was one of a kind, one of a kind, absolutely. What a perfect way to honor her legacy with this renaming. Ladies and gentlemen, all those in favor of the motion on the table made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by, well, seconded unanimously by the entire commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We're on item number 12.03, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, this item recommends the award for the Taxway Bravo Rehabilitation Project at the, at the airport to project M of Tallahassee, Inc. David Pollard, our airport director, is here with a short presentation.
All right. Pollard, before you begin, once again, congratulations and thank you for your hard work with you and your leadership team in helping with the storm response, both in central and south Florida, allowing our airport to be used as a staging area on top of maintaining normal operations. And if I understand correctly, after Helene had moved through our area, the, the ground field was opened by 8:00 a.m., I believe, and then flights resumed that afternoon? Is that correct?
It was by 6:00 a.m., Mayor. Once we realized, constantly, I know the entire team was busy, but once we realized the team, the winds were starting to die down at 2:30 a.m. that morning, instead of opening at noon as we originally projected, I, I said, let's get going, let's get moving. The resource that we are for our community and this entire region, it's very important to me that we be resilient, we bounce right back and understand the role that we play out there at the airport.
The, the ability to get the airport up and running like that, and then a couple of days later, to be able to work with the Secret Service, Land Air Force One, and Marine One at our airport and to do it safely while maintaining normal operations, great job. Congratulations. The presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, the city manager, commissioners, appointed officials. Again, it's a privilege to be back before you again today. We're seeking your approval to authorize a contract award to M, Inc. for Taxway Bravo here out there at the airport. Along with that, we would award a contract to McFarland Johnson to assist our staff with the construction administration and the resident project representative services that go along with such a detailed project like this. This project improves safety, increases capacity, meets the latest FAA technical design, safety, and geometry standards. All this came about as a result of some lessons learned a while back on previous accidents. So as NTSB investigates, FAA does their follow-up, we learn from each accident that's out there, and this is a result of one of them. And what we're doing is ultimately eliminate the direct access to a runway from a ramp area. Eliminating direct access to a runway from a ramp area. It requires, now requires, turning movements. So what we're seeking to do is eliminate the direct access and all, and let me go back for a minute. And this also is a part of the $17 million grant award that we received recently from the FAA, which brings, now brings our total over the past five years to over $63 million of grant funding received out there at the airport. So we're working hard, continuing to work hard to deliver quality projects that build up our airport. up our airport. What this does, again, if you notice those sections of pavement, if you look at the terminal apron, for example, you'll see that will eliminate a section of pavement there, and that would require a turning movement for that aircraft. Also, on the left side, as I'm looking at it, the left side, you'll see Taxways Bravo and Bravo Eleven, those two that come up to the runway. That adds capacity at the airport. We have, currently have a single taxway that leads to the runway. In that case, it's our runway nine out at the airport. That adds capacity by allowing a second aircraft to taxi into position and hold while that first aircraft lines up on the runway and prepares for takeoff. So again, very strategic investments funded by grants from the FAA and our partners at the state. We're very grateful to our funding partners at FAA and the state for their continued great support as we continue to move ahead. And with that, we recommend that you award the project to M, Inc.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Direction, comments?
Move staff recommendation, option number one.
Option number one has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any direction, discussion? Any none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. Thank you very much. We're on item number twelve point oh four.
Mr. Mayor, we'll roll seamlessly into this next item, which involves our airport as well, and it seeks your authorization to finalize negotiations and execute the necessary agreements with the Florida State Guard for the development of lease and lease of airport property at the Tallahassee International Airport. Let me take the opportunity to recognize our Florida State Guard Executive Director, Mark Thiemy. He's with us today, and he's leading our State Guard. And David has a short presentation on this item as well.
Thank you, city manager. Again, our role that we play here at the airport and continuing to meet the needs of our community, our region, and in this case, partner with our state agencies that provide an important service to our citizens of the state of Florida and this community and region. Again, partnering with the State Guard, we've been working very hard behind the scenes to negotiate and, and develop a site plan for hangar facilities out here at the airport and all. So again, we're seeking your concurrence on this. The Florida State Guard intends to lease approximately two and a half acres out there at the airport with an estimated capital investment of approximately seven million dollars. That agreement alone, as a land lease, provides us over two point six million dollars of new revenue to the airport over the thirty-year term of the agreement and all. Next slide. So this gives you a conceptual site plan. We also took the opportunity to look at some of the older facilities that are out there as we develop this. This is included in our airport master plan and airport layout plan as we sought FAA and FDOT's concurrence with conceptual planning out at the airport. So this exactly matches what's in our airport layout plan and, and reflected on that and approved by both Florida Department of Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration. In concept, this provides the two hangar facilities there, and you'll see it sits right next to the hangar that you're familiar with there on the north ramp area. That was previously the Flightline Hangar and is now the Arrow Center Hangar. So this would sit right next to that. And also, as we build this, we would also be tearing down that old FedEx facility that's out there from way back when. So, but we get to a higher and better use of our property, and it works well, as I said, with our, our current planning efforts. I would be remiss if I didn't touch briefly on the comments, the hurricane brief that Dr. Whitley provided, as well as some of your comments here today. That Coast Guard helicopter you see there, that was at zero six oh one. As we pressed to get the airport open, they were knocking on our door. So that's, that's a great example of how our efforts to be on our game, understanding there's a lot of moving pieces out there, but the resource that we are for our community, waking up air traffic controllers, waking up TSA and saying, let's go, let's get this rolling. It takes a while. It takes a while to get the engine going again with respect to the airline coordination, rental car coordination, the concession air coordination. So all these different things. In the meantime, as you mentioned there, we've become a, almost a military airfield, right, over on the general aviation side. They're looking for a home. They're looking for a place to put down these helicopters. They're coming, right? We have to deal with them, and, and we want to be on our game as we continue forward. We have to do it all in a safe manner. Over here, we're handling the military traffic and, and the state relief operations, coordinating with our emergency operations center, as well as the state emergency operations center. So again, smooth and efficient. These helicopters, they're on the bottom left, that's your urban search and rescue. They loaded up on a couple of Chinooks and took off out of here. So we're coordinating with the fire department, we're coordinating with the FBI and many others to get them on their way at daybreak there. So, and with that, I'll stop there, but again, we seek your approval to finalize our negotiations with the Florida State Guard.
Do we have, thank you. Do you, we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay. Executive Director Thiemy, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. Would obviously love to give you the opportunity to speak if you'd like to say anything on behalf of the State Guard. While you're approaching too, it is my understanding that you're retired military, sir?
Yes, sir, retired Marine, if I might, sir.
Yeah. Thank you for your service. We appreciate it. You two Marines working together, get things done.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the city commission, thank you very much for an opportunity here briefly to, thank you for considering an opportunity for us to be able to add to your development plans in the city from a statewide emergency management and crisis response capability perspective. The opportunity to be able to develop infrastructure here where we can weather in our emergency response capabilities is quite advantageous to us regionally and within the state. We don't have to fly out of the area. We can be right here, and as Director Pollard was saying, be ready to go at the moment of need without further delay. So I'm grateful for your consideration and glad to be a part of this town. Born and raised in Florida, did grow up in the house about, and I understand there's some Seminoles in here, but hopefully that doesn't offend any other members of the city commission. So I'm grateful for your consideration. I do appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thanks for joining us today. So open it up for any comments, discussion. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this item forward. David, I just had some questions on, on the numbers. The, the total revenue generated, two point six million, that's over the thirty-year contract or the, is that the forty-year with the extension?
It's a, yeah, it's a thirty-year contract. There is two five-year extensions in there. So actually, if we exercise those extensions, it's greater than the two point nine million. So it continues it forward, but it gives us that option to allow that agreement to continue on.
Okay. And are, are there any other revenues generated for the airport?
Well, there'll be what I call the indirect revenue. So they're going to certainly be coming over to the airport, using our concessions, things of that nature. They're going to be buying fuel.
Right.
They're going to be bringing in other guests and things that, if they're not state-owned aircraft, will trigger our landing fees and all if they're civilian-owned aircraft and things of that nature and all. So there's various aspects that will help us generate additional revenues on top of the two point nine that are traditional with respect to, if I call them, general aviation or business aviation type operations. We waive the landing fees for the state aircraft, the military aircraft and all. But, you know, I suspect, as we typically see with some of our other state agencies, they're going to bring, bring in other guests and things of that nature, just in the course of normal business.
Okay. And on the expense side, the, the apron site improvements, what's the city or the airport's cost on that? I know there's, I think there's, they cover fifteen percent. I can do some math based on what's in the agenda item, but just, do you have a number for that?
Yeah, we're, we're anticipating under five million on our end. So again, that would be grant funding as we work with the state and also work with the Federal Aviation Administration on that. So what we're trying to do is add more, increase the size of our north apron areas, basically it. So we're tearing down, I mentioned the FedEx facility. We're also tearing down, I've nicknamed them the rust buckets, these old port-to-port type hangars that have been out there. They were actually relocated shortly after I first started over thirty years ago. They were relocated shortly after I first started. So these old rust buckets, I'm trying to get rid of all these old facilities from a site appearance, from the highest and best use of property and things of that nature, the latest design standards that are out there. It, it's time to do a refresh and get to a higher and better use.
So your intention is we'd be eligible for grant funding for the four point five so million?
Absolutely.
In that airport's cost? Okay. I just bring that up, looking at the expenses and the revenues generated seem to be a little imbalanced. I was just wondering, you know, how that would be covered. I think that's, that's informative. My only other second concern is, and I've raised this on, on previous items, and I do appreciate the, the kind, the letter of intent, so to speak, attached, but I continue to not be comfortable approving thirty, forty-year contracts without the final agreement coming before the city commission. As, as was shared earlier, our city manager doesn't share all information with some commissioners. We don't receive regular updates on, on these items. So to, to hand over final approval to a city manager that doesn't respect all the members of this board I don't feel comfortable with, so I would request that the final contract come back to this board for approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any, any other comments?
Move for staff recommendation.
Second.
Been properly moved for staff recommendation by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. David, congratulations, and this is exciting. And it speaks to your management and leadership that we're seeking grants as to what Commissioner Matlow pointed out to cover the hard costs associated with, with welcoming the State Guard. And Mr. Executive Director, I don't know if you were here earlier, let me, let me reemphasize, we just had a briefing on Hurricane Helene, and the State Guard is tremendous, plays an important role. I want to thank you on behalf of the city of Tallahassee and Leon County, our community, but I know that you work all over the state of Florida, and we're honored to have you here and call it home, and welcome to the family, and we look forward to having you at the airport. Sure. All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Passes four to one with Commissioner Matlow in opposition. We are on item number twelve point oh five. Mr. Sutton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item twelve point zero five requests the approval of the city commission for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five annual audit plan. City Commission Policy one oh four requires that the Inspector General's Office bring forward an audit plan annually. As part of developing that audit plan, we conduct a risk-based analysis of city operations where we solicit input from executives, department heads, the city commission, the public, the city audit committee, and various others to help develop this plan. On September twelfth, this plan was brought forward to the city's audit committee, who reviewed the plan, looked at it, and recommends approval of the plan by the city commission.
You want to brief us on the audits being, being proposed?
Absolutely, sir. There, there are two new audits being proposed for this year. The first audit deals with IT access controls, where we will look at controls that are in place to help ensure unauthorized access to city systems is mitigated to the greatest extent possible. I think everybody knows that IT is a tremendous risk facing every city, and it's really not a matter of if you're impacted, it's a matter of when you're impacted. And so are we doing everything we can as an organization to protect our IT assets? The other new audit being proposed is an audit on confidential data to ensure that we protect confidential data that is within our control, such as names and addresses of public safety officials, social security numbers of employees and the public that are utility customers, and other data that may be in the possession of the city. Are we doing everything that we need to, to make sure that that data is adequately secured? And then there are several audits that are being carried forward from prior year, from the prior year, that were not completed this year for a variety of reasons, such as unanticipated absences, vacancies in positions, and changes in audit scope of audits that are ongoing. That's, that's the audit plan for this year, sir.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Open it up for discussion and comments.
Move staff recommendation, option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any other discussion? Well, I'm going to weigh in. Mr. Sutton, we had a conversation yesterday, and I'm not going to go into great detail, but I do want to say for the record that I am not pleased with where we are. Five years ago, the Audit Office proposed two dozen proposed audits on an annual basis. Today, you are proposing two new audits. On top of that, a year ago, we approved, how many audits?
I don't have that information in front of me, sir.
Right. But we're carrying forward thirteen, which means what we approved last year to be done in a calendar year, or excuse me, the fiscal year, thirteen of them have not been completed. Granted, I understand probably half of those you are finishing up, but even six or seven audits haven't even begun, and they were approved last year. Now, as we discussed, if we need to move to a two-year audit cycle for transparency, I think that reflects better on the office than approving a one-year and not completing the work. So I think I made my position very clear yesterday.
Yes, sir.
I, I would like to have an update on those outstanding audits.
Absolutely.
When can we expect them to be done? And what is that scheduled for completion? But to propose only two new audits for the tenth-largest city in the state of Florida, the capital city, to me is, is not acceptable. I expect more. I expect more from the office. In a time when you're asking for more responsibilities too and expand into an inspector general auditor role, we cannot allow the auditing function to fall to the wayside as well. All those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your comments. I, I did want to express my view. I, I very much appreciate the audit reports that we receive from the auditor and the inspector general. I find them very informative. I think if there's one area I can see for improvement, it's oftentimes implementation. We see audit recommendations that city management, you know, feels they're doing a good enough job on. So I think as a commission, we could do a better job of reviewing some of those audits and making sure we're implementing those policies, because that's why the public wants a strong auditor and inspector general is to identify some of these issues that we can address. So I, I understand your concern about the amount of the audits. I am more concerned with the, the quality of the audits and the information that, that's released, and I appreciate your work. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Commissioner Matlow, I'm sure you misunderstood what I said, because I did not call into question the quality of the audit that's been done, the work product that comes out that's seconded none. The question is, when this commission formally approves an audit schedule and there's an expectation for it to be done in that fiscal year, and then half those audits are not done, then I think we need to ask ourselves why, and we should ask these tough questions. And when we go from five years ago proposing twenty-four audits down to this year proposing only two new audits, I think it's fair to ask why. Now, I'm going to support the motion, and we had a great conversation yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And I know that we'll have further conversations, but I feel compelled to place on the record my concern of, in five years, we have taken a significant drop in the number of proposed audits, and then when we do approve the audits with the expectation that they're going to be done, and they're not done, we should ask why. But in no way have I ever questioned the professional outcome of the audits that are done. In fact, let me go on the record and say, you and your team do an absolutely dynamic job.
Thank you.
Now, having said that, we do need to stay on schedule.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I, I concur with you. I go over those details that you're seeking, that you're, you're speaking of with our audit committee on our quarterly meetings, and I can, will commit, I'm committing to do a better job of involving you in those type of discussions.
Excellent. All right. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're on item number twelve point oh six. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this seeks commission approval for the bargaining agreements with the Tallahassee firefighter, professional firefighters for both the rank-and-file and supervisory units. The negotiating teams reached agreement a little less than two weeks ago. By process, the union took that, those agreements to its members for a vote, and I believe it was on Tuesday, that vote was finalized and both bargaining units voted to approve the agreements. So by process, it's in front of you for final approval. Let me, and I'll say this, this will be effective October first this fiscal year. That's the start of a fiscal year, and the terms will run. start of a fiscal year, and the terms will run through September 30th, 2027. That provides for pay, other terms of employment and conditions of employment is full agreement. Let me recognize Vice President David Morrison, who's in the office, he was the, or in the chambers, he was the chief negotiator for the union and also our chief, Gene Sanders, and so both of them are here, Chief Sanders, command staff is here as well. It takes a lot of input, it takes a lot of negotiation, these are negotiations, I think we all understand that, a lot of give and take, each side has some constraints, they've got folks that they've got to report to, and they were able to get that done, and so I appreciate their work at the negotiating table, I appreciate them getting that done timely, and if approved by the city commission, this will put the contract in place as scheduled.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have one speaker on the item, Mayor Stanley Sims.
You name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
My name is Stanley Sims, I'm at 1320 Avondale Way, the proud father of a newly firefighter. I chose to speak on this issue because it's different when your son is running in that fire, when everybody else is being told to stay back. Every two days, at 7:05, 7:10, me and my wife stand up, help my son grab his grip overnight. We tell him bye, we love you, and be safe. And that just sounds simple to you all, but it's different. It's different, and you can't equate that. And I'm quite sure it's the same thing with a police officer. My son went into a house over in Quincy that was on fire, and Mr. Mayor, the lady actually died. But when my baby came home, his ears were blistered. It could have been more. You don't never know. And these guys says, "I'm going to take that on for you." And that's commemorable. But what I don't like is, why dog these brothers out this long time? Because they chose to use their diplomacy, and they supported Christian Dozier. They decided to endorse Christian Dozier, and if you look at the head of things, they wasn't bad off with their endorsement. So one public service was given the red carpet.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Was given the boot. They're tired. But I had a lot of people calling me when they read that in the paper, and they said that whenever you are ready to continue to fight, the citizens of Tallahassee appreciate you, and we are willing to fight for you, because I don't think we're where we ought to be.
You have three minutes.
With you. Thank you for your turn.
Mr. Sims?
Now, do I get to respond, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no. I can't see, you got a glare, what are the buttons that you're wearing?
Oh, and Mr. Mayor, I got a button with Vice President Harris, this Harrison walks.
Got it.
This is one Tallahassee, we be out in the community, and I got the new button, it's got pictures of walks, I'll drop one off. Thank you.
Great. Is that your pack, Commissioner Matlow, one Tallahassee?
I don't think politics should be discussed at this position.
This is my time.
I know.
I'm not comfortable getting into politics from the dice.
No other speakers on the item.
Okay, let's open it up for discussion. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, as evidenced by the mayor's statements, that this whole negotiation has been political to him. Peer political retaliation is what we've seen from the mayor, is what we've seen from the city manager's office, and I've never been more disappointed in the city of Tallahassee than I am today. It's shameful what's before us today. You know, we've been told that we would get a contract that represents what the majority of the city commission wants, and the contract before us today doesn't even get our, get our members of the fire department above 50% of median. We should be an all-American city, we should be among the best paid in Florida, and to know our city, without ever consulting the city commission, without ever having an executive session, went to the table and said, "This is our last best offer." They knew what they were doing, because they did it last year, when they held 22-plus meetings and dragged it on for a year, and this body said, "Even though we dragged it on for a year, we're not going to pay you for the year of the raise, we're just going to take it from you." So then they went with an offer that isn't even competitive to neighboring counties like Jefferson, and said, "This is our last best offer, and if you don't take it, we're going to take another year from you, we're not going to give you a raise for another year." What are you going to do? This government leads by fear and intimidation. It's led by the mayor, it's backed by the city manager, and it's wrong, and it needs to change. So while the offer on the table, there's no ticker-tape parades in front of city hall today, celebrating how great we're treating our firefighters. Morale will continue to be down, because the message that was sent by this government is, "We don't respect you, take it or leave it." And it's embarrassing to be a city commissioner that took that stance against our firefighters, it's embarrassing to be on a city commission that, while taking that stance, asked to double their own pay by nearly $46,000, it's embarrassing to be on a city commission that pays executive city managers three times what our peer cities do, approaching $300,000 from multiple managers, and they're not running into fires, they're not getting their ears burnt, they're not putting their lives in danger, but it's been 5%, 5%, 5%, 5% year after year after year. None of our assistant city managers probably ever expected to make as much money as they do now. But our firefighters expected to be able to pay their bills, they expected if they put the life on the line and work more hours, by the way, 53 hours a week, I get ads every day, I guess Gainesville thinks I might be a recruit, because their ads pop up on my social media, celebrating the reduced work hours and the increased pay, and I'm sure that looks pretty nice, that's why we've had members leave to go to other departments. I think unless we see a change, they're going to continue to leave, but as long as we continue to prioritize the people at the very top to run away with taxpayer dollars and not firefighters, it's going to be a sad day. So I look at the agreement today, and some of the years are okay, year one, 10 and 1/2%, year two, 7%, and then lieutenants, 5%, captains, 4%, lower than general workforce, getting less raises in year one, and then all those raises decline in year two or year three. I guarantee you, this commission will give general workforce employees over the next three years a higher raise than 3%, 4% per year, because I look, I look back, I watched them do it last year while giving battalion chiefs and captains 0%, and it's unacceptable. So I'm glad it's political fun and games for you, Mr. Mayor, but it's not to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me, let me say thank you to our chief of fire for being at the table, thank you for, thank you, Vice Lead Negotiator, for being at the table, representing your constituents, and thank you for the city of Tallahassee for also being at the table. This is not a new process, this was the process that was being used when we came to the commission, and so I don't know what, you know, how we got here, well, I'll take that back, I do know how we got here, but that's neither here nor there. This is a new day. We have an agreement, people have agreed, they voted, their voices have been heard. I don't think we need to continue to wallow in that. The community wants us to get busy, doing what we are supposed to be doing, and I know that you continue to do that even during this time, and I want to applaud that effort, and thank you so very much for not letting this drag out to all of these, this is not political fanfare. These are, these are people's lives, these are lives, not people, not politics, and I encourage my colleagues who speak the loudest about political games to look in the mirror, because this is where it began. As the city of Tallahassee, as commissioners, we were not supposed to be deep into that process, we were supposed to follow that process, press conferences and rallies, that's not what's supposed to happen when you're dealing with unions. There is a described process approved by the state of Florida, and that's what I try to abide by. Now, you know, if, Commissioner Matlow, if I was as embarrassed as you say you are, I think I would be trying to find something else to do, because I'm not embarrassed. I'm here doing the job that I've been hired to do to the best of my ability, whether you like it or not, I'm doing the best job that I can with what I have to work with, and I support firefighters, many of the individuals who are firefighters are individuals who I've known since they were in high school, and I've had conversations with them. So I think what we're doing is we're doing the right thing to move this thing forward so our city can move forward together. As I said earlier, relationships matter. If you keep coming up with negativity and making relationships bad, it makes people not want to work together, and maybe make people not want to do the right thing. We are in such an ugly, and I said this earlier today, in such an ugly place in politics in our city. It's, that's what's embarrassing, we're setting a bad example for our young people and others who are watching us, because we're doing things to win what, to win an agenda? It should not be about my agenda, your agenda, it should be about what's best for the residents of the city of Tallahassee. And the best thing for the city of Tallahassee residents is to get this agreement done, and let's move on. Let's move on. And that's what I'm ready to do, so let's vote.
Excellent. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm just really disappointed to hear the comments that have been made here this afternoon as well, because my history with unions and support of our firefighters goes way back, Commissioner Matlow, than what you brought when you came to this commission. My family is a union family, my wife worked for the teachers' union for 18 years, I was a member of the United Faculty of Florida, a union member, I understand that process, I value the invaluable service that our firefighters provide for this city. I've always cared about that. The state of Florida outlines a collective bargaining process that the city commission, this is where our role begins, to improve, to approve the contract that's brought to us, not to sit in an executive session and say, "Oh, yeah, Mr. City Manager, this is fine," and then leave the executive session and go to a rally in front of city hall with the firefighters? Is that how you conduct business during collective, "Oh, yeah, you did it." But that's not how you-
We're not having an executive session.
Commissioner Matlow?
That's not how you conduct business during the collective bargaining process. You allow the parties, the city manager and his designate, the leadership of the union, to come together and to collectively bargain salaries and benefits. That's how that works. Maybe you weren't familiar with that, but that's how that process works. And that process was followed. I am totally disappointed in how politicized this process was made. It was made political. It doesn't necessarily have to be political, it shouldn't be political, but you and others made it political. Yeah, oh, yeah, don't look surprised. Made it political. But here we are now, where we have reached an agreement, and rather than us wanting to come together, approve this agreement, and move on, and heal those wounds that have been created, you're still now wanting to call names, and these firefighters are part of the city of Tallahassee family, like all of our 4,000-plus employees, that's how I consider them, is part of the family, and we look out for each other as family, and that's what has happened here. We need to get beyond this, I've never seen anything like it in my 24 years of public office, I've just never seen anything like this before.
Is that a motion for approval, by the way?
I would, I would make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem has made a motion for option number one, which is to approve the firefighter and supervisory unit collective bargaining agreements with Tallahassee Professional Firefighter IAFF Local 2339, authorized city manager and his designate to execute the associated contracts, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Commissioner Porter, did you have your hand up?
I would like to hear what Commissioner Matlow has to say.
Okay. Mr. Manager, you asked to interject as well?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that the details are reported correctly, some of the information Commissioner Matlow said wasn't correct, and I just want to be fair to everybody. And let me say this, it was a good negotiation, and these negotiate, they're negotiations, that's the, that's the part of the process. I mentioned earlier that the union lead negotiator here, I asked Chief Sanders to take the lead on negotiation, because he has the pulse of the department better than anybody can possibly have, and so that was part of it, and I think it really led to a good outcome, but part of the process was being informed about what other firefighters make elsewhere, and that was brought up, so I want to make sure we're really clear in that the reporting of it's not incorrect. I've mentioned numerous times in this discussion, there are numerous ranks, the rank-and-file is made up of firefighters, engineers, and lieutenants, and so those are very specific ranks that are comparable with other departments, and then you have our supervisory ranks of captains and battalion chiefs, and so on and so forth, and so we look very, very closely at that, we established market, and when we talk about it, it's not really in commonplace language, but we talk about a percentile of pay. If you were at, in theory, 50 percentile, that's at the median, that would be at market, that's what that would mean. It's been said, I've seen the president of the union say that this reaches 47%, that's not true. What we know is, for the rank-and-file, it ranges in the 60s to 80%, I think the lieutenants are even at 80%, so they're at the top of that market when you compare others, and that's good, we were trying to achieve that, it's not uniform, it varies, and I believe at the very top, the battalion chiefs are right at the median, and I'm happy to share that information in detail as needed, and so that was very informative to the process, and I think instrumental in getting us to where we are, and so clearly, the members of the bargaining unions voted, clearly that's what happened, and so they had to vote on that, but, but that's helpful, especially as the chief and his command staff are recruiting individuals to come work for the fire department. I know we can say things, you know, whether they're true or not, probably doesn't help, ideally it'd be true, but at the end of the day, the numbers will speak for themselves, and the chief will be able to recruit with this contract, and I'm very, very glad it was a good negotiation, and it was done on time. And so I just want, there was, there's data behind this, it shouldn't be reported incorrectly, the data is what it is, the comparable departments have been agreed to by the negotiating teams, it was well done, we weren't speaking on different pages, we were all singing from the same hymnal, and ultimately, I think it led to a good outcome, a timely outcome, so I just wanted to share that it needs to be reported correctly based on the outcome. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think my statements were accurate, if we're comparing apples to apples based on our hours where- We're comparing apples to apples based on hours worked and payment received based on what we're seeing across the state of Florida. I see what other departments are offering every day. And it's less than, what they were offering last year is less than what we're offering this year. So the statements are correct. Mr. Mayor, I'm disappointed that the chair of this board continues to let this board devolve into personal attacks. The basics of Robert's Rules and Order is that we talk about the business before the body. And repeatedly, myself and Commissioner Porter have come under attack from Commissioner Richardson with personal attacks. None of this is personal. The comments I made are directed to the issue at hand. And I hope we could all be professional enough to keep our comments addressed to the issue at hand. But to the points you did make, this is not the process. Commissioners who have sat up here long enough have known. I've been here six years. This is the first time we've ever had a collective bargaining negotiations that didn't start with an executive session from the city commission. The city manager's job in his negotiations is to do his best-- this is state law, commissioners-- is to do his best to best represent the view of the elected body. That's us. Our role doesn't start today. Our role started at the very beginning. And it should have been done in an executive session. And commissioners who have been here know that. Because except for the most recent executive sessions, which they skipped, and this one, which we did not have one, they've always attended. And as far as my personal opinion as an elected official, I'm here to represent my constituents. Firefighters are my constituents. The general public are my constituents. And the process does not take away my right to have an opinion on what we're doing. My First Amendment right doesn't go out the door because the city manager decides not to hear an executive session, to have an executive session so we can express my opinion behind closed doors. City management decided that this should go public, that this whole thing should be fought in public. And they did that to lead by fear and intimidation. They wanted to shove their way, my way or the highway. And that's what we've seen. And that's what we've seen today by an affirmative vote of this majority, is to condone that. So the agreement that's on the table today, I guess, is the last and best offer, may be told privately, I don't know, to the city manager. I don't know how we got to a last best offer without consulting the legislative body that makes final approval. But here we are today. So I reject your comments. I reject the continued politicization of this issue. And again, ask everybody to do what's right. And looking at the wages here, it is not what's right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to be clear that state law does prescribe the process for negotiating, but it does not command an executive session. I said the last time this discussion was had is that I had no intention of calling it an executive session because all the prior executive sessions on this matter, Commissioner Matlow and Porter violated the confidence of those. So all of the matter has been discussed in the public. And that's certainly my prerogative as chief negotiator. As set forth in state statute, I was clear. I remain clear. I have no intention of calling an executive session, one that is bastardized by commissioners by violating the confidence. An executive session is a tool for the legislative bodies to strategically and confidentially discuss it. If unable, then we can discuss it in the open. And that's what has occurred. I think the suggestion is that somehow we didn't follow state law. And that's not true.
Commissioner Porter, you haven't had a chance to speak yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if Mr. City Manager can elaborate on his accusation.
Elaborate? In that each time we had an executive session, that you and Commissioner Matlow left the meeting and shared that information with others?
Yeah.
I've said it many times.
What information?
The information we discussed in the meetings.
Shade meetings.
I'm just wondering, do you have proof of that?
Yeah. When we were doing the first negotiations, we had the shade meeting and you two walked immediately out the front door and joined the union at a press conference and discussed what was being discussed in shade meeting and continuously have conversations behind the back of the commission as well.
Do you have proof of this? Because that is not what happened.
Yeah, we all saw the news articles about the press conference.
I can leave. At that point, that information--
Call the question.
Question's not right. Well, question's been called. I'm not going to vote in favor because I haven't been able to provide my comments either.
Okay. I'm just trying to--
I understand. I understand.
I'm just wondering--
We're going to have this conversation.
City Attorney, if that were even true, would that be illegal?
Madam Attorney.
Yeah.
Would what be illegal? I don't know--
If someone were to share information about an executive session, is that illegal?
Well, executive sessions are intended to be confidential.
That's right.
They are.
My question is, is it illegal? I understand what-- I've also been a member of a union and I've negotiated on different sides of this as an employee. So is it illegal? Because I want to just make clear to the public who are listening what we're being accused of.
It's a difficult question to answer, Commissioner, in a hypothetical circumstance because it's not illegal to hold a press conference after an executive session, for example. It would very much depend on what was said in that press conference. But it is, the purpose of an executive session held in the shade is to keep the information in that setting confidential.
Of course.
So I can't really answer.
But the purpose of that is because ideally, we're working together and it's to protect our position.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I just resent that accusation being made without proof. You don't know what conversations I had. And I want to echo what Commissioner Matlow said. I am embarrassed as well. I'm ashamed. I think it's a disgrace. I wish you all could hear the way staff was talking about our fire department in those executive sessions. I wish that you could. Because the condescension-- I mean, if you have seen what's played out in public, imagine what was going on in private. I saw it. It was despicable. And I just don't think we're living in the same reality. But my role is to do what I believe is in the best interest of the public, of the general public, and not of the reputation of the city. But what's in the best interest of the general public. And we are all held accountable through the electoral process and in a million other ways. And that is what I'm accountable to as well. So I don't regret and I will never regret doing what I think is right, raising the issues when I believe we need attention on the issues. And I think the public stood with them. And when we were out there, all of us, I mean, it's despicable. So I mean, I'm speechless that we're just not even living in the same reality. And I don't think that we are doing what is right by our first responders by any means. I'll support this because it's the agreement that we have. But that by no means is an indication of my belief that this is fair, that this is equitable, that this is our best offer, or that this was reflective of an honest process.
Okay. My comments and then I'm going to call for the vote. So first and foremost, Mr. Morrison, you're here on behalf of the union, not as a member of the fire department. I want to thank you for your leadership during this negotiations. I look forward to turning the page. I look forward to sitting down one-on-one in the near future as well. Our families go back quite a ways. And I look forward to the future with Tallahassee Fire Department. And I want to thank all the members of the union that took swift action to ratify this contract, and I intend to support it. And we have a deep appreciation for the fire department. But it's time to turn the page and it's time to move forward. I have to emphatically disagree with Commissioner Porter's statements about closed-door sessions and the manager-- I can't remember exactly how you said it, but ripping into the fire department and speaking disparagingly. I am here--
You weren't there, Commissioner Richardson. You don't--
I have the gavel. It is my time to speak. I'm looking at-- now, Madam Attorney, you weren't there yet. That was back when the other attorney was still here. But Mr. Cook, I know that you sat in those closed-door meetings. And I'm not going to speak for you. Did you ever hear the manager completely rip apart the police of the fire department?
On point, Mr. Richardson. Is it appropriate to ask--
I have the gavel. It is my turn to speak. Everyone has had the opportunity to speak. It is my time to speak. Thank you. I have patiently waited for my time and I am going to have my time. But Mr. Clerk, I'm looking at all the members and you don't have to answer now. But I am sure that on their own time after the meeting, if you want to go up and ask what was said now that those negotiations are done and over, that was the previous contract, please ask them. I'm here to tell you right now, Commissioner Matlow, this all did start with you. You are the only commissioner up here that has a pact that wrote a $10,000 check to the union. Commissioner Porter, you had your own party at the union headquarters, which is fine. That's great. There's nothing wrong with that. But to act like that there is no politicizing of this process from your part is just completely fallible. So what we're going to do is we're going to take this vote. And hopefully, this puts the nail in this chapter and together, we can move forward. All those in favor of the motion on the table made by the Mayor Protem, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And it passes 4-1 with Commissioner Matlow voting against the contract. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in recess till the public hearing at 6 o'clock. Gentlemen, I'd like to call the public hearing to order. It is 6:09 on the 16th of October. We are on item number 14.01. Mr. Manager. Excuse me. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 14.01 is the second and final public hearing for the Florida A&amp;M University Campus Development Agreement. Again, this is the second and final hearing on the campus development agreement between Florida A&amp;M University and the city of Tallahassee. The city commission held the first of two public hearings on August 21, 2024. Under state law, the city as the host government and FAMU must enter into a campus development agreement to implement the university's campus master plan. The recommended action is option one, conduct the second and final public hearing and approve the agreement.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
We have no speakers on the item, Mayor.
No speakers. Colleagues, direction, comment?
As a proud graduate of Florida A&amp;M University, it's my honor to make the motion that we accept staff recommendations.
Second.
All right. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by the Mayor Protem. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Do we have any other items come before us at the public hearing this evening?
No, sir.
All right. Let's move into unadmitted speakers. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have about 25 speakers at this time, Mayor.
All right. Sounds great. Let's begin. Everybody will have-- we'll get to everybody. Everybody has plenty of time to speak. You'll have three minutes. When you hit two and a half minutes, the clerk will let you know that you have 30 seconds left.
Our first speaker tonight is Roy Knight. Roy Knight, to be followed by Harry Brown.
Your name and address for the record.
I am Roy Knight. I'm actually admittedly not a citizen of the city itself, but of Leon County. I am an architect licensed in the state of Florida. And I am here as a professional to report what I observe is my responsible-- my responsibility as a licensed architect, what I view as being incorrect or wrong. And so that's why I'm here. And very quickly, I am here to oppose this break through the Micasuki Greenway. I was on the committee that led to the development of that committee, of that greenway. And also, especially the Circle K, which is, I think, terribly placed, 60 feet away from a home and along this roadway. So I just simply say this is my simple explanation of why I oppose this proposed building. Yep. And break through the greenway. The greenway, I think, can be resolved in another way. Perhaps the Circle K can go to another place. So it's not necessarily that neither of those can happen. But I think the whole thing just has to go back to the design table and that's it and then be worked out properly. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Harry Brown.
Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm here to speak the truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God. I'm here to remind you and the citizens of this community of how egregiously and abusively I was treated during my more than 19 years of loyal and dedicated service provided to this government. Lou Shelley, the city attorney during the time of my employment, stated that he had not seen any other employees treated the way I was treated. This city has been dubbed as the most racist city in America. Not Florida. America. That is noted by the way the government is run. You can see it here tonight, what goes on here with you people. It is governed by a city charter that was written on December 9, 1825, that was written during slavery. And the slave treatment was what I experienced during my employment. I was denied overtime pay while white employees of higher pay grade received theirs. A kill switch was placed on the desk in violation of my First Amendment rights. Commissioner Nancy Miller stated, "We put in the kill switch for Mr. Brown," quote unquote. Seven white gentlemen came forth to speak against how I was denigrated and violated. Got mad at it from a nine or three-page document of lies that was ordered by Anita Favors as stated by Sharon O'Fahney. I was fired and marched out of City Hall with a gun at my back that was orchestrated by Anita Favors and Tom Cole. My severance pay of $31,000 and $16,000 of my attorney's fees were denied in violation of the city's policy. After my firing, three weeks later, my personnel files were defrauded stating that I resigned, while my signature is nowhere on the document. I fought in many kangaroo courts at City Hall with Sharon O'Fahney trying to charge me with sexual harassment, all to no avail. Now, noting that the cost to build a new police station has gone from $40 million to more than $120 million based on the way Reese, Gold and Daly operate and the lies that you, Curtis Richardson, saying that this is an all-American city. You need to quit it. You need to go on and get out of here. And I see you get all kind of smiles on your face when Curtis Richardson is speaking and when it needs to be Diane is speaking, okay? It's sad what went on here tonight.
You're at three minutes.
It's really sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jacqueline Perkins, followed by Dot Enman Johnson.
You have three minutes. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jacqueline Perkins, 1618 Keith Street. Thank you. On behalf of the Morgan family, extended family, friends, Bond residents and supporters, I'm here to express appreciation to the city commission for your unanimous vote to rename Municipal Way to James, Major James Morgan Jr. Way. We're especially grateful to Commissioner Curtis Richardson, who presented the agenda item and requested the consideration and approval of the commission. Thank you. We appreciate you. And I want to thank Commissioners Matlow and Commissioner Porter for attending the ceremony that was hosted by the sheriff's office on yesterday. They had a good time. We know that Commissioner Williams Cox and the mayor would have been able to, if they could have been, they would have been there. As you know, Major James Morgan was a dedicated, trustworthy, committed, conscientious and competent law enforcement professional who served for almost 50 years with dignity, distinction and honor. But did you know that he was a lifelong Bond resident? He was born in Bond. He was raised in Bond. And he stayed in Bond. And he was a role model in the community. He loved Bond and we loved him back. He was the community police before community policing was ever initiated. So he attended Bond School. He went to FAMU High. And we are proud of him. And what we do know is that Major Bob Morgan left an indelible mark in law enforcement and the community. His legacy will definitely live on in the lives of many generations of relatives, coworkers, students and friends he encountered and encouraged. Everybody talked about him yesterday. And I think if you read it, you know what he did. He did some wonderful things during the special-- During the special ceremony hosted by Leon County Sheriff and Gadsden County Sheriff, we illuminated and celebrated Major Morgan's salient accomplishments, and we shared those historical facts with the community. We saluted him for his selfless service to God, family, law enforcement, and the community. The renaming of Municipal Way to Major James Morgan Way was one of the highest honors to bestow upon him for his sacrifices, challenges, and trailblazing service that led to transformational change in the landscape of law enforcement agencies. We know that he, what he did was historic, it was impactful, and we want everybody to know that he is from the Bond community. He stayed in the Bond community, and he was loved by many. And what you may not know, there was also an internship position that was named for him-
You're at 30 seconds.
...in the United States and the U.S. Attorney's Office. So again, we appreciate you, and what we do need to tell you is that Major Morgan will make history again, because he's going to be the first law enforcement professional who's going to be included in the Florida Civil Rights Museum once we put Delator and I the gallery for our law enforcement pioneers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Dot Inman Johnson, to be followed by Kim O'Connor.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Dot Inman Johnson, 2121 Trescott Drive. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Canopy neighborhood in opposition to the Circle K, 60 feet from the homes of residents in that neighborhood. Certainly, there is a way to reorient that so that it follows the former rule of the city of no more than 500 feet from an existing residence. And also to support the J. Gaither neighborhood in asking that something be done about the flooding from the lake abutting their neighborhood. This has been a problem for decades, and even though you may not be able to do the massive mitigations that might be necessary, that might cost millions of dollars, you could do something that's less costly, like putting retaining walls, or berms, or both, that prevent the overflow from that lake. It not only floods the neighborhood, but it floods your own J. Gaither Park Golf Course. And you would think you'd want to do something about that. And finally, I want to say, there should not be a ticker tape parade over the settlement of the firefighters' contract. And yes, I agree, it was an embarrassment here tonight. I haven't seen anything like that in all of the 53 years I have been a resident of Tallahassee. But these two commissioners didn't make it political. It became political in March 2023, when you guys refused to work fairly with the firefighters to resolve that contract. Those people were beaten down for 19 months without getting their-
You're at 30 seconds.
...without getting their retroactive. And I know what an executive session is, because I'm a former mayor and city commissioner. And any city commissioner can make a motion to call an executive session, and with at least three votes, one can be called. The city manager answers to the city commission. He doesn't direct-
You're at 3 minutes.
...what the city commission does.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Kim O'Connor is our next speaker. Then we'll hear from Willie Whiting.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Kim O'Connor, 2650 Municipal Way, or should I say James Morgan Way? 2650 James Morgan Way? How'd you say that? I was here in June, and I'm still a resident at the Barney Center. I can't go too far there, because I'll start weeping, but still grateful to have a place to stay. Because a new policy had been instituted April 1, and the mayor kindly let me put it into the record in case anybody was interested. I myself did not understand the policy, and the director herself, Sonia Rolson, told me directly that I did not understand the policy. I still have not understood the policy, but I wanted to update. I know politicians, I've been a politician, I've run campaigns. I met Commissioner Porter at a forum during this campaign. I met Jeremy Matlow after the last time I came. I met Diane Williams Cox when she was handing out, serving us at the American Legion. I think I told her my mother's name is Cox. And Curtis Richardson, I know since 1984, when he was Al Lawson's top lieutenant. So, and John Daly, I heard him speak at the Tallahassee Bar Association. So, no, he's somebody better than others, but I've met all of y'all. So my understanding of the quality of the commission is, you know what's going on, but I, just in case the WCOT people would like to know, City of Tallahassee viewers, the policy, the new policy, April 1, as I told you in June, took effect July 1, 90 days, and it has become, there's a big deadline coming up at the end of this month, many, like 100 stacks of, 100 pages of notices were given to people. I did not get one, I can't share one with you, and there's this Friday deadline for on appeals. I just want you to know that is going on there. Now, rumor has it, not total rumor, but the director, I was outside, there's a deck, and then there was inside the dining room, and I missed, so I missed her exact words, but she came in to tell the clients, the residents, that somebody had called somebody, and a reporter had called her at 10:00 p.m. at night, and she was doing the best she could on the leak of the thing, which I'm sure is correct, but that people shouldn't call the commissioners or reporters. And I think everybody retains their civil rights. And rumor is that whoever it was, the client, called the mayor, and the mayor called a reporter, and it says true. I just kudos and thank you, thank you all, your commissioners, very much.
You're at 15 seconds.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Well, I can tell you, I didn't receive a call, and we did not call the media on this, but. Our next speaker, please.
Willie Whiting, and then Vernon Jones.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Commissioners, I'm Apostle Roy Whiting Jr. I'm the president of the J. Gaither Neighborhood Association. I live at 3112 Brookridge Drive in the historical J. Gaither community. As a result of having talked to Commissioner Curtis Richardson, who lives in my nearby community as well, having talked to Commissioner Diane William Cox, deputy city manager Cynthia Barber, I've talked to assistant city manager Karen Chumerville, Steve Schaefer, director underground utilities and public instruction, infrastructure, Mr. Jody Calhoun, P.E. manager, stormwater management, City of Tallahassee. As a result of these leaders not directing their staff to do the maintenance required in the J. Gaither and the Silver Ridge community, I've brought this support to the city commission chamber to let you know that I'm not just blowing my own horn, and to let the public and City of Tallahassee know that our city leaders will not direct their staff to do the maintenance in the J. Gaither neighborhood and the Silver Ridge neighborhood as required to maintain the aesthetics, the physical qualities of life in the J. Gaither community. As a result of not doing the maintenance required in the J. Gaither neighborhood community and Silver Ridge neighborhood community, we have flooding that creates a safety issue, mosquitoes, sediment weed buildup, algae buildup as well, aquatic weed, discoloration of Silver Lake East, scum, nauseous odors, excessive debris, slime and muck on the bottom of the lake, plant overgrowth, excessive nutrients on the bottom of the lake, dead wood, tree limbs. And in closing, let me say this to you two as well. I've asked the city leaders that I've talked to three things. I've asked them, I made three requests, to put metal skirts around the J. Gaither Golf Course-
You're at 30 seconds.
...and the Silver Lake East of Ridge Road, to dredge it out, clean it up, the wetlands, and to put at least two floating ponds there that will help us out, too. I haven't gotten any results. I've never spoke to our city manager. I've been trying to get to him for months now and can't get to him. I've been promised that he was going to call me, but he never did. So if I can get some help-
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
I'm sure this will be discussed on the commission time. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Vandon Jones, and then Stephen Martin.
First of all, I want to say good evening. My name is Major Vandon R. Jones Jr. My address is 3307 Wheatley Road. I want to finish echoing the remarks that were made by my president. I am the vice president for the J. Gaither Neighborhood Association. Our concern is water control on the north side of Bragg Drive and the side of Glenwood. There were skirts that were placed in the ditch. It took care of the erosion of the ditches, which was all of the water, which is about 25% of the water that flows from the city. The ditch was put in in 1933, and it was directed to go into what we call Silver Lake East, which is a natural pond. I have been talking and also spent some time with Mayor Daly and the rest of the folks. We went out and took a look at that. What we're asking the city to do is to take some money, skirt the ditches on the south side of the road, which is Bragg Drive and Glenwood, and that leads through J. Gaither Park. We're asking that you put the skirts on the back of Silver Ridge. The city had to actually go in and pay the residents of Silver Ridge to reinforce their homes because of the erosion damage. But what you didn't do is you didn't come back out and dredge out that lake. The other thing that was done was that those homes on the south Notre Dame side was bought out because of not only flooding, but mold mitigation and other issues that damaged the homes to a point where you had to buy them out. What we're asking you to do is go in and dredge out the areas that you own, you bought them out, dredge them out. The other thing that we're asking you to do is to restore the lake, Silver Lake East, to its original layout in 1913. We got briefings from the city. I've had drones flown over those neighborhoods, so you have film. We've already showed the city what can be done. Now, what we were told, that everyone wanted to spend a million dollars on trash catch basin. It's not what we're looking for. And we were also told that it would only take a few million dollars to actually go in, dredge out those areas. We're not talking about flooding, we're talking about water control. The land belongs to you, we're asking you to be good neighbors, and put the skirts in, dredge it out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Major. Thanks for your service. Our next speaker.
Stephen Martin. Stephen Martin, and then Lauren Schuler.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Stephen Martin, 265 Stone.
Could you pull the microphone a little closer, please? Thank you.
Nice to be here in person. Yeah, I'm here about Canopy many, many times, going back years, talking about it. And this isn't the first time you've heard from these residents, or residents of other neighborhoods impacted by the same developer. This includes out there at Oxbottom and Thomasville Road, where there was a gas station involved with that, as well as a Sanco mining operator. And in 2017, one of you might recall this, residents of Woodhaven, which is adjacent to Sanco, came in here voicing concerns about expansion of Sanco mining, and mentioned respiratory ailments they had been experiencing, airborne dust, as well as noise. The owner, the same as the developer of Canopy, came up, and he defended himself by saying he built a 40-foot-high pile of cement debris. I wouldn't understand why the residents- I don't know if you can or not, but I- That's the kind of person you're dealing with. And I know this has been said something that's out of your power, but, well, you do have leverage, and you could let this developer know, who I'm sure will be asking in the future. You will remember, and use leverage for it. Now, Canopy was advertised as a nature base. If somebody who knew the land before it's been formed. The city claims to be concerned about environmental reasons, water protection. Well, this gas station is upslope and not far from Dove Pond, which is a very different body of water protection. But there's been massive alteration, movement of dirt, alteration of the topography. Inevitably, problems are going to arise, uncertainty, as has been the case, they've had flooding off of both ends, off the west end, which resulted in record fines from Northwest Florida Water Management District, and off the east end, which is impacting the greenway. With all this uncertainty, it doesn't make sense to have a gas station in the vicinity of any body of water, let alone anywhere on this land that's been so altered. I would think if you're seriously committed to environment-
You have 30 seconds.
...protection, you might bring that up as well, use that as some evidence. So this developer has been befriending commissioners for a long time, making handsome donations to campaigns, et cetera. Nothing new about this. I love you. Think about the residents. I don't live in Canopy, but I understand, I feel you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Lauren Schuler is next, and then Colleen Taylor.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Lauren Schuler, and address is 2428 Sweet Valley Heights. I'm sure you might recognize me. I've been up here a few times. I started coming up to the commission meetings in, I think, June, always talking about the same issue, which is the Circle K that's being built in the Canopy subdivision. And I gotta tell you, like, having put in a lot of legwork myself, and I know my neighbors have as well, to try and get this issue resolved, I'm starting to feel very defeated in that I feel like we are being listened to very well. You know, we come and we speak, we have our three minutes. Sometimes we're able to, you know, get ahold of somebody outside of these meetings and have conversations, but that's all it ends up being. The only thing that has really happened, the only progress that has been made since June, since I first came up here and spoke when we first found out about all of this, is that Circle K closed on the property. So they now officially own that property, the developer no longer does. So that feels like, you know, totally like 10 steps back, despite all of our efforts, despite a lot of people telling us on this commission that something would be done, something would be done. A letter was sent to the Circle K corporate office, from my understanding, because I never officially heard back from anyone about it, from my understanding, Circle K refused to even talk to the commission. My thought about that is, okay, so the next step is that we need to, you know, figure something else out, right? We need to do something to problem solve this. But instead, I feel like the response to this has just been shrugging of shoulders and hoping it goes away. You know, oh, there's nothing to do, just wipe our hands clean of this and just move on. But for the people who live in this neighborhood, we can't do that. We are seeing ourselves getting closer and closer and closer to having a gas station in our literal backyards. And we keep coming here, and we keep trying to get help, and again, we're getting listened- And again, we're getting listening ears, but we feel like that's it. And I know that as a governing body of this city, you guys can do more. And that's all I'm asking, is that you do more. I know that there may be, you know, obviously, like, things that you can't do. I understand that. But do something. Listening is not enough. This is happening if we don't do anything about it. And once it's built, that's it. So please, help us while you still can. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Colleen Taylor, followed by Michelle Riley.
Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Colleen Taylor. My address is 3629 Meadow Vista Lane. I am also a resident of Canopy, and I am one of the residents that is within 60 feet of the Circle K in my backyard. Me and my husband and our two daughters moved here last year. One of my daughters, right here in the crowd, my 11-year-old, and we have a two-year-old at home tonight that is getting ready for bed right now. We have some really big concerns in our family about the personal safety of our daughters moving forward when this is built. I don't think that we're gonna, even with our fence in the backyard, that we're gonna have auditory or visual safety from the comings and goings of all hours of the day from people that are coming in and out of the Circle K. When we purchased this property, it was explained to us that this was zoned as part of the town center, but that it would be for something like boutique shopping or something that'd be safe and walkable for the residents of our neighborhood. So this came as a huge shock to my family. We would never have purchased something that would have endangered my children. So I just, I haven't had a chance to come since the June meeting because we work, we have children, they're involved in Girl Scouts, synchronized swimming, various activities, PTOs, and this is my first time to come and beg you all to do more than just a little bit of lip service. My family really, we are very, very concerned with what's moving forward and upset that we've seen in the meantime that the property's been closed on. I know that a lot of people that live on my street also work long shifts and long hours. We're the tinier houses in the neighborhood that may not have a nine-to-five job like some of the other people in the neighborhood. And some of the people on my street rent, but there is a lot of families in that area, and they all have the same concerns as me. And I just wanted to voice my opinion for those other people on the street that aren't able to always make meetings like this because of difficult work schedules. Thank you all for listening to me tonight, and I really am hoping to have more conversations with you all about this. I guess that's all.
Our next speaker. Our next speaker, please.
Is Michelle Riley, followed by Jim Mitchell.
Michelle Riley, 2910 Fontana Street. Good evening. I live in Fontana since 2020 with my two young kids. The proposed Circle K gas station will be half a mile from my home. The plan Premier presented when I purchased my house in 2019 included a town center with grocery shops, restaurants, which after five years has not happened. Instead, their great plan is now to build a Circle K gas station next to the future Tallahassee Senior Center. We were blindsided by this plan of building a gas station that they had to secure the changing of zones in 2021 and secure permits under our noses without a public hearing. They did not issue proper notice for the residents to be aware to keep us uninformed. This is neither right nor fair, and that's why Circle K and the Gazvenia Premier don't want to make a comment now. There's already four gas stations less than two miles away from Canopy along Capital Circle, total of 13 gas stations within a three-mile radius by Centerville and Mayhoun towards I-10, of which four are Circle K. How many more gas stations do you need for convenience, and why too close to homes within 60 feet? NIH National Library of Medicine recommends that government agencies should establish rules and permitting enforcement procedures to reduce pollution and environmentally burden some facilities and land uses. Along their studies found that living in highly trafficked roads and gas stations is related to an increased risk adverse health. There's also a possibility of stored gasoline can travel to soil and chemicals can travel to groundwater, causing drinking water contamination. Do you want that in your neighborhood? This is Canopy residents' third appearance in the commission meeting to plead your help in this great concern that Premier Developer and Circle K do not care. As leaders in this city, I hope you will see the risks, not only in the environment, but also in the health of our families from long-term effects of fuel exposure, adding loss of property value and potential increase in crime rate that a gas station will bring. And respectfully, you are in public office for a reason. And I hope you will use your seat and abilities to choose to serve the best interest of the people and not the developers. I'm asking that you protect the people's well-being, especially our children, from these harmful effects rather than the pockets of the developer and business owner who are only thinking of profit at our expense. Please find a different location that is more feasible for a gas station and not in our backyard.
You're at thirty seconds.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Riley?
I'd like to give out this information from the NIH, if you mind.
Yeah, you can just give it to Sergeant Riley there. Ms. Riley, I just want to apologize. I had to ask the manager and the attorney a question while you were speaking. I was listening, but I just had to scoot over real quick.
No worries. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Jim Mitchell, and then Joseph Travis will follow.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I was here in August on my wedding anniversary, speaking about the issue of the Circle K in Canopy. We are one of the two houses in Area 5 that are close to, across Dempsey Mayo to the Circle K site. When I came here in August, talked about environmental concerns, traffic concerns, safety concerns. I'm a senior who lives in Canopy. I'm looking forward to that great Senior Center that now the ground has been broken and it's going to be a beautiful center. But we are concerned about Circle K literally being in our backyard. You can stand in my backyard, and I invite any of you to come to my backyard, and throw a tennis ball from my backyard over the fence, over Dempsey Mayo, and you could easily land it in the proposed Circle K parking lot. That's how close we are. We were walking our dog around the neighborhood just recently, and a neighbor came up to us, and they were very upset about Circle K, and they wanted to know if we, being one of the closed homes, what we're going to sell. Were we going to move? Because this neighbor said that they are seriously considering moving very soon, selling, while they still had property value. I never thought about that. We moved into Canopy, it'll be in November on my birthday, two years. We enjoy and love it in Canopy. I never really even consider the idea of moving or selling. But some of the neighbors are talking about property values may go down, what, what the quality of life will be like in Canopy after Circle K comes in. It was something I never considered, and I hopefully will not consider it now, but I'm just wondering what will happen to property value when a Circle K comes in so close to our home? I do not know. I'm hoping that something, at least some more conversation can take place, like the city commission promised back in August. And I'm not sure we've had that conversation with the residents in a fair and open way. So we're here again, talking about Canopy, talking about Circle K. It's a beautiful neighborhood, but it's, we're asking not in my backyard and not in our backyards. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Joseph Travis, and then Steve Dury.
Your name and address for the record.
Joseph Travis, 2816 Sweet Ridge Street, in the Canopy Development. I wonder, were I to ask Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Goode, Ms. Toman, Mr. Cook, which of you would volunteer to trade homes for six months with one of the people who live within 60 feet of the gas station? If I wonder, if I had to ask that, how many hands would go up? But I'm not asking. Now, you wouldn't raise your hand. Why are you willing to do unto them what you wouldn't do to yourself? It's mysterious to me. Zoning was redone, permit seemed to be shaky to me, and yet, there's nothing that can be done. I don't believe it. I just can't believe it. Now, I know in, in a previous meeting, I gather, I gather, that many of you were resolved not to let something like this happen again. Now, I've lived here 44 years, and I've seen this sort of thing over and over and over again. District 850 at the other end of Canopy, that should never have happened. Yet these things happen all the time. So the question I really will ask you, when is next time going to be this time? When is it going to happen that you say, you know, we're not going to let it happen next time to these, to the residents? When is next time going to be this time? So that's what I leave you with. Thank you very much for your attention, the opportunity.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Steve Dury, then Nikki Joyce.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Dury. My address is 3844 Ardmore Lane in Canopy. Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, City Manager. Today, I urge you to pause any further approvals for the Circle K gas station development at Wilani and Dempsey Mayo. Require a comprehensive health, an environmental impact study, and an audit. You have the power to do this, and now is the time to act. I stand here on behalf of the residents of Canopy and communities across Tallahassee who feel overlooked, unprotected, and frustrated. This gas station would sit just 60 feet from homes and families, a move that jeopardizes our health, safety, and natural resources. Are you really willing to sacrifice our neighborhoods for corporate profits? This is about more than just one gas station. It's about a troubling trend we're seeing from developers like Premier Homes, who are paving the way for gas stations in Tallahassee's residential areas. They, along with other developers, have been allowed to reshape our neighborhoods with little regard for the families who live there. The dangers are real. Gasoline vapors from gas stations contain benzene, a recognized carcinogen. Studies show that people living within 500 feet of gas stations face increased risks of cancers, including leukemia in children, due to prolonged benzene exposure. These aren't minor inconveniences. They're life-threatening risks for families who live, work, and play here. We cannot allow these dangers to be overlooked. Additionally, even modern double-walled fuel storage tanks can leak. Improper installation, degradation of seals, or unexpected issues can lead to leaks that contaminate the groundwater. When gasoline additives infiltrate groundwater, they render it undrinkable, often permanently. And while Dove Pond is not a drinking water source, it is an integral part of our environment, supporting local wildlife, including a nesting bald eagle, and maintaining the natural beauty of our community. The risks from leaks are too great, so I ask you, who is Tallahassee for? Is it for the families and residents who love this city and call it home? Or is it for developers seeking profits at any cost? You were elected to represent us, the people who trust you to prioritize our safety and quality of life.
You're at thirty seconds.
We need you to stand up for us now. Let this be the moment you choose to put the community first. What do you want people to think when they hear the name Tallahassee? A city known for its beautiful Canopy roads and pristine natural springs? Or a city with a gas station on every corner in every neighborhood? The choice is yours. The legacy we leave depends on it. I recommend you all take a vote and stop the progress of this gas station and ask for a full audit. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Nikki Joyce. Nikki Joyce. Nikki Joyce will be followed by Mark Walinga.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Nikki Joyce, 2790 Sweet Ridge Street. I've lived in Tallahassee since November of 78, thoroughly enjoyed it. We, we talked about, my husband and I talked about downsizing, and, because I was, we had been in Lanin Woods with many, 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 many trees, and it got to a point where the thought of hearing the trees falling was great for me. And I wanted to have something on a one-story level that was comfortable for either one of us. And I've, we found the perfect house. It's just great. It was a house that was built with love and with the idea of if anything happened to one of us, the other would be able to live there. And I am a survivor of that. My husband passed away almost two years ago, but I found the most wonderful people in my neighborhood. They've taken care of me. They've given me all the attention that I could use. They've been there when I wanted to do something or not do something. They've just been there. And I thought, this is very fortunate. And imagine how shocked we were, all of us. There wasn't anybody that had an inkling about this, this whole situation. We just couldn't believe, what, what in the world is, do they think they need to do to come into a beautiful, wonderful neighborhood when it's not necessary? They're out of place. It's just not, it's, it just doesn't make any sense. They belong out on the new extension off of the interstate. That's perfectly fine. They have one already on Capital Circle, so that's fine. But they don't need to be in a housing area. It's just ridiculous. And anybody that hears about it says, huh, you gotta be kidding me. Well, we're not kidding, but it's serious, and we want to be taken seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Walinga is our next speaker, to be followed by Taylor Harmon.
Good evening. I'm Mark Walinga. I live at 2441 Sweet Valley Heights in Canopy. I'm retired. I was a Florida licensed professional geologist for 30 years. Worked as an environmental consultant, probably worked at 1,000 gas station sites close to during my career, and worked in Tallahassee for 15 years. I know a lot about gas station contamination cleanup, primarily in Florida. My professional opinion, there are two major concerns regarding this location for the Circle K so close to residences. First is explosive hazards. Gas stations have explosions. They do. They're not, they're rare, maybe four to five a year in Florida. Similar to a natural gas explosion at a house that happens, you see it on TV all the time. It's very dramatic. That risk is real, and a lot of communities around the state have ordinances where you can't build a gas station within 250 to 500 feet of a gas station for that reason alone. You have children living here within 100 feet of this proposed gas station. If an explosion were to happen there, it'd be catastrophic. Houses would burn, people would die. This would. And while that number's very low, four to five a year happening in Florida, it just takes one in your neighborhood to make it real and make it catastrophic for the family, anybody who's impacted by it. The second hazard are environmental releases. Gas stations leak, they always do. Surface spills are guaranteed. It will happen, it's just how many times is it going to happen at that gas station? What will happen at this site is it'll either leach in the groundwater or it'll get washed off in the storm drains. Sediment in the storm drains will get saturated, and when it rains in the summer, it'll flush it out, and you'll end up with a gasoline slick in the, in the pond, in the lake, and then you'll have to address that. So you can be proactive or reactive in this issue. Tanks and lines also leak. It probably won't happen here quickly because it's going to be brand-new, but over time, it could be an issue. In that case, it'll get into the groundwater table, which, this location is very shallow, it's probably five feet, and it's going to head straight towards Dove Pond if it ever gets there, and it'll also leach into the bottom sediments of that lake, and you'll have a gasoline slick there too, which time you have to address it. This happened in numerous locations throughout the state. I worked on a site here in Tallahassee.
You have thirty seconds.
There's a gas station right by the police station, and that plume there, that station leak, that plume was almost reached Lake Ella, probably 100 feet from Lake Ella. You don't want that to happen at this location. So I just ask you, and your number one priority should be protecting public health and safety and the environment. These risks are preventable by being proactive. Simply eliminate the risk. Don't let a gas station get into that location. Otherwise, the residents of Canopy are going to have to live with that risk. And thank you, you can get rid of it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Next speaker is Taylor Harmon, and then Kristi Perkins.
Good evening. I'm Taylor Harmon, 2797 Juliana Lane. I'm speaking today to voice my opposition to the granting of building permits for the proposed Circle K location on the corner of Wilani Boulevard and Dempsey-Mayo Road. This opposition is based on concerns for my neighbors and the impact this proposed location will have on their health and general well-being. The proposed plan includes multiple gas pumps that are uphill and directly backed up to my neighbors' yards. The potential health impacts from fuel runoff alone and the proximity to areas children and pets play should be enough to raise concerns for the proposed plan. Additionally, there are concerns regarding light and noise pollution and the potential for increased crime rates regarding a 24/7 gas station in a neighborhood. And I ask that this body review all previous permits that were proposed and granted and deny any future permits or applications that that Circle K location has for this specific location. I'm not against Circle K. I'm not against Canopy. I'm not against any of you, but I just think the location is just really poor planning, and the permits and the approval of those permits should really be looked into as how it even got this far.
Next is Kristi Perkins, then followed by Tito Leaden.
Good evening, Commissioners. I know it's way past 3:00, and you're probably hungry, so we'll be as brief as possible. I'm Kristi Perkins. I reside at 2389 Sweet Valley Heights in the Canopy neighborhood. I'm a Tallahassee native and a full-time second-generation Realtor for two decades, which I say only so you know I know a little bit about what people are looking for in this town when they buy real estate. It's not a gas station 24/7 in their backyard. Should be obvious. Tallahassee is trying so hard to be Florida's progressive city. I'm so proud to be a Tallahasian. I'm so proud to live here, but being a progressive city means having progressive residential development, and that doesn't involve a gas station 60 feet from houses. And I'm going to say something that may be a little unpopular. I don't really blame Premier. I blame the city. You guys, I know some of you, if not most of you or all of you, were not part of the comp plan that allowed this to happen, but somebody didn't read. How was this allowed? I remember before, when there was just model homes in Unit 1, I'm going off my script here, and Premier was saying, well, the city has dictated how many balconies we can have, the lot sizes, exactly what all of this stuff is. We couldn't figure out how deep the holding pond needed to be, how shallow it needed to be, where it needs to be. We were going to have a dog park, but the city said the holding pond had to be bigger. And how did we forget chapter whatever about gas stations 60 feet from a house? We're voting right now on whether or not to give full-time pay to our Commissioners. We need full-time reading skills. Please. Again, if you guys didn't do this, somebody else did, but I just, I want to know, how did we get here? How did this happen? Everyone said all the things we need to say about the number of gas stations here, but you guys can fix this. Which is going to be more expensive for the city at this point? Because Premier's done. It's closed. It's done. And I don't blame, they're businessmen. Nobody else wanted that piece of land. They sold it. I don't agree with it, but it's done. And it's done because it was allowed. It took one of my clients two months to be able to have a hair salon next to a gas station in another part of the city in terms of permits, but this was so easy. You guys can fix this. Fix this. As elected officials, you are here to wrong, or to right the wrongs of previous Commissioners if something was messed up. They messed up in a big way. Right this wrong and fix it.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Tito Leaden.
I couldn't hear you.
Next speaker is Tito Leaden, and then Aiden will follow.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Good day. Tito Leaden, and my address is exempt. Oh, I like her. She's cool. And, you know, jumping off of that, the city does need to be accountable, right? The police station going from $40 million to $140 million. The city needs to be accountable, and that includes the police, right? And, you know, that's why I agree with TICAC, Tallahassee Community Action Committee. We need an agenda item for the civilian police review board reinstatement and all of the city charter restrictions on that. You know, we need an agenda item on that because clearly the city does things that, like someone can't read. Why is the police allowed to just hike up prices on anything and do anything they want? Why is every part of this city allowed to be a little, you know, unorganized, right? And a crucial part of that should be the law enforcement. That's a crucial step towards getting the rest of the city in order. And yeah, we need an agenda item for the civilian police review board reinstatement because it's very important. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Aiden. Aiden will be followed by Catherine Kurzweil.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Aiden. My address is exempt. I'm here today as well representing the Tallahassee Community Action Committee. It's been our campaign for the past several months to call for the release of Calvin Riley, demand a retrial, and ask the city to do everything in its power to help this happen, or at least to issue an apology to the Riley family and to the public, who they have consistently disparaged publicly and privately. They cannot even do this and have consistently reminded us that this city has given all powers to TPD to conduct its own internal investigations and abuse its citizens. I hope it's clear to all of us here, as well as those city commissioners who are sitting or hoping to be elected, that the people of Tallahassee need the Citizens Police Review Board. The city and the police cannot be trusted to hold themselves accountable and have removed all possibility for the citizens to hold their institutions accountable. This is wrong unequivocally, and we will not stop fighting for the CPRB to be reinstated to its full powers as soon as possible, as well as the Citizens Police Review Board to be added as an agenda item to the city commission meetings. Finally, we ask that those up for reelection or those hoping to be elected remember who they represent and to know that our fight will not stop in November. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Catherine Kurzweil, and then Thomas Spears.
Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Cathy Kurzweil, and my address is exempt. It is of utmost importance that the city commission reinstates the Citizens Police Review Board. We need to make sure that police are held accountable for their punishable actions. What happened to Calvin Riley is a perfect example of why police cannot be trusted to review themselves. How does it make any sense? There needs to be a board of active community members who can hold them accountable. If you listen to the people of our community, you will see that reinstating the CPRB is beneficial to every citizen. This is why it should be added as an agenda item to the next city commission meeting, and at the very, very least, there should be a public apology from the city commissioners to the Riley family, because what happened is just unacceptable. I yield my time.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Thomas Spears, and then Delilah Pierre.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Thomas Spears. I live in 32303. As a member of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee, I call for the commission please to call for a resolution to reinstate the Citizens Police Review Board. The police is supposed to work for the people. As of right now, they are not trustworthy to be able to hold themselves accountable. It's up to the people to be able to do that, and the CPRB is a step to doing that. I'd like to also speak about the fireworks earlier today in the meeting. The negotiations with the firefighters' union was embarrassing. It's absurd for Commissioner Richardson to say that the union negotiations with the firefighters shouldn't be political. I don't know if you missed this, but the firefighters' union negotiated with the city, and the city is a political body. Union negotiations are always a political matter, one of workers' rights in this capitalist system. In these negotiations, the city took their stand against the workers. The majority on the commission showed that they are against the people in many regards. That's why they don't support community control of the police. That's why they voted against affordable housing in the blueprint meetings. That's why they refused to support an end to USAID to Israel as the apartheid state commits a genocide in Palestine, one that has officially killed over 40,000 people, with the unofficial number being over 180,000. The commission has shown that they are against the people of the Canopy neighborhood and is siding with the national chain gas station instead. Maybe Circle K just doesn't need another store. Maybe they will be all right if they take a hit to their bottom line, which they probably wouldn't in the first place. It's not going to be the executives, the CEOs that are living 60 feet, 100 feet from potential gas leaks and the vision disturbances and auditory disturbances. It's going to be the people in Canopy. Maybe you can just make that not happen, and Circle K will be okay. Maybe you can stand with the people this one time. One way or another, the people are going to remember. Firefighters will remember in your elections in two years, Commissioner Williams Cox and Mayor Daley, and I highly doubt that you're going to get their endorsements, and the people of Tallahassee will remember in two years as well.
Our next speaker, please.
Delilah Pierre is next. Delilah Pierre, followed by Adam Flannery. Not saying Delilah Pierre, then Adam Flannery. Mayor, this is the last speaker I have for in-person speaking. We do have a couple of virtual speakers.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Adam Flannery. I live at 3501 Chauncey Road. Wanted to say I'm calling on the city to reinstate the Citizens Police Review Board. There is nothing in HB 601 that prohibits the CPRB from reviewing closed complaints and making recommendations for oversight of the department. The law doesn't change anything that wasn't already in effect when the CPRB was established. I'd also like to say we don't need more money for policing. We need money for housing, for transportation, and other priorities that have been shown to reduce crime, to improve people's lives, and provide for safer communities.
Our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker, I'll check and make sure both have connected. The first would be Ajit Kuru. Ajit Kuru, virtually, will have three minutes, as have our person, as our individuals in person.
Can you, are you able to listen to me?
Yes. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Ajit Kuru, and I live at 2433 Sweet Meadow Vista. I've been a Tallahassee resident since 2022. I just want to say that I oppose Circle K for obvious reasons that everyone has stated. But more importantly, I think that you should have a conscience as city commissioners to help the people as opposed to helping developers. And I understand business is an important aspect from capitalism, but people's, you're all doing this for people to live in, and if people are not able to live in the community and there are dangers for their health and well-being and not able to take care of their children's needs, just like one of those children could be your grandkids or could be your kids. So please put yourself in their shoes and understand the dangers of allowing Circle K to move forward. My suggestion is work with Circle K and decommission that from happening, from the gas station happening, and help the citizens of Tallahassee to live safely. That's why you have been voted to represent them. Do your jobs. Please do your jobs, and respectfully, we thank you for listening to us, but we want you to do more. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Franklin Perez.
Hi, this is Franklin Perez. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Franklin Perez. I live at 4250 Alafera Trail, Oviedo, Florida, 32765. I demand the following from the Tallahassee City Commissioners. One, reject the $135 million Tallahassee Police Station. Two, no more money to the Tallahassee Police Headquarters. No more funding to the Tallahassee Police Department. Three, restore and reinstate the Citizens Police Review Board and reverse the city charter restricting its right to stronger civilian oversight. Four, have the Citizens Police Review Board review Tallahassee police officers, Kirsten Oliver and Margaret Moose conduct when it is restored. And five, advocate for a retrial for Calvin Riley and the Tallahassee Police Department release an official apology to the Riley family. The treatment of Calvin Riley is a perfect example of why we need civilian oversight of police in our cities. Not only is the lack of accountability for the officers responsible for Calvin's arrest concerning, it is also extremely concerning that the Police Benevolent Association openly antagonized and threatened the individual who released the evidence of misconduct from Tallahassee police officers. Tallahassee City's mayor and the commission as a whole talked at previous meetings of using diplomacy to help citizens who don't want a gas station near their property. The city commission admitted they didn't have any outright influence to change this project, but could still use their connections and influence to pressure the property owners. They refused to use this property, this power, I mean, to help the Riley family seek a retrial for their case, hypocritically claiming they have no power to make the court speed up their process. The city of Tallahassee as a whole has a history of disrespecting police brutality victims and their families. Hiring Police Chief Lawrence Revel in and out of itself is a slap in the face to George Lilnuke Williams' family, who Revel played a role in murdering in the 1990s. The city of Tallahassee needs to do a better job of showing respect and deference to victims of police brutality. The Tallahassee City Mayor needs to, at the very least, speak in favor of the Riley family and show an ounce of empathy. What we need is a Police Accountability Act that would require the formation of civilian police review boards with real teeth to oversee state, county, and city police departments with the full powers to independently investigate, discipline, and most importantly, terminate problem police officers. We also need to do away with qualified immunity because it gives police officers a virtual license to kill. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful night.
Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, that's the last speaker I have registered to speak.
Say the best for last, huh?
All right. Let's go ahead and have Commissioner, time Commissioner Porter, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank everyone for coming, and I would like, Mr. City Manager, if possible, that we, I haven't heard the latest about what the city, what the conversations have looked like from the city with the community. Last we met, I believe this had been delegated to Commissioner Richardson, and so I was hoping that we could get an update from either you, Mr. City Manager, or Mr. Reddick. And as part of that update, I mean, I'm completely in agreement, and I want to explore not only how we address this situation, but how we prevent this, of course, from happening in the future. So any tool we have at our disposal, please make that clear to us.
Okay, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe there has been attempts to talk to Circle K, and from my knowledge, they're not willing to talk. We can't compel them to talk, and so I think as it relates to conversations with Circle K, that's where that stands. The process that we've talked about, and I think has been acknowledged by all, is that this use can happen at this particular site, it is zone for this particular use, and so what that leads to is a site plan, the first step, not a building permit necessarily, but a site plan, and that, I believe that has been complete, as long as they can satisfy all the requirements, that happens, and then it moves to the next step. I was unaware that Circle K had bought it, but stands to reason that's where it would be in the process. So, and keep in mind, as Circle K is the applicant would file for approval, the growth management staff would be obligated to process that in a timely manner, and so that's my understanding where we are in the process.
Commissioner Porter.
So can you talk me through then, what the, in detail, what the next steps will be for that application?
So, so once the site plan is approved, and to my knowledge, I believe it's been approved, so that satisfies at the highest level, and then as the applicant moves to construction... And then as the applicant moves to construction, then you would get into the more granular building permit applications. So it would be actually to ensure that the site, so now you know how it's laid out, you know the orientation, you know the traffic flow, that's at the site plan level, you know how the utilities will connect, those, those kind of macro level details. When you get to the building permit process, and I believe there'd be environmental permits and there's, well, that's at a more detailed level, and that has to meet, like state building code, these kind of things. And again, those would be applied for, to the growth management department, and they would obviously be obligated to follow those rules and make sure that the applicant satisfied all the requirements.
So what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is as long as everything in the application is satisfied, I mean, there's obviously nothing on its face that is keeping growth management from approving this, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Well, I'm interested in hearing more from my colleagues, especially Commissioner Richardson, who I thought was taking the lead on this, if he has any feedback.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Richardson.
If you recall, Commissioner Porter, at the last meeting, you all asked me to pen a letter to Circle K to set up a meeting with city staff in the neighborhood and the Circle K management. The response I got back from them was that they weren't interested in, in, in talking or meeting with us concerning that issue. That was as far as I went, based on the direction that I was given from the commission. I did speak with Mr. Kuri, did I pronounce it correctly? And I shared that information with him. And at that point, he told me that based on that, they thought they had two additional options. One, we had talked about the permit from the Department of Environmental Protection and, and reaching out to them and seeing if there was, if that was a way to address this issue. And the other was legal. He didn't say what legal meant, but those were the two options he told me they had, based on the fact that Circle K was not willing to meet and have that discussion.
And one of the speakers mentioned an audit. Can anyone speak to that as an option?
Sure, I'll speak to that. This is what I'm going to propose. So when you came before us earlier, we were in the process of the site plan review, and what we said was correct. The city commission does not have a role to play in the site plan review. If they meet the requirements of site plan review, then it is approved. But now that the transaction has taken place, we're in a different phase of this development, and they have to go through the building process and the building permit process and the environmental process, which we do have a say in. So what was previously stated is not out of the context. We were correct. We did not have a problem, and we're a role to play. But as we move forward, we do. Mr. Reddick, I appreciate you coming forward, because here's my questions and here's my proposal, okay? I also agree that, how in the world they're going to pass an environmental permit, build a gas station within 50 feet of a house? They're not going to be able to do that. That's my own personal opinion. I have no professional background in planning, but to meet the standards required to put tanks in the ground, the possible contamination, the possible runoff and the whole nine yards, I don't see how Circle K can do it. And I don't have a problem with halting all permitting based on that environmental, natural features inventory study that's done, the audit that, please, give me a second. Natural features inventory that's going to be done, audit needs to be done for environmental purposes, everything from the light pollution and the whole nine yards, okay? So before they move forward with any other permitting, they've got to be able to comply with, with the environmental aspects. And at the end of the day, I don't think they're going to be able to do so, okay? So here is what I am proposing, okay? I am proposing, number one, that we formally offer to buy the property from Circle K now that the transaction has taken place. We are not dealing with Premier anymore, we're dealing with Circle K. And I am proposing that we reach out and we pay the same amount of money that they purchased so that they are held financially without any impact to them, okay? Number two, if that does not work out, then I would suggest that we look at eminent domain for health, safety, and welfare reasons. Let them sue us, please, please, please. Let them sue us. I don't know, Madam Attorney, and I'm not an attorney, whether or not I would stand up in court and whether we would win or not win. Sometimes you've got to fight the good fight. But I don't think it's out of, you know, out of normal for us to offer to pay full price for that property, maybe even consider some type of a land swap for other land within the Waloney area that the city owns, to see if there's something that's more appropriate. And hey, maybe they'll be good neighbors and say, we'll sell it to you penny for penny for what we bought it, and we'll be done, okay?
Mr. Mayor, if I might just to...
When I'm done.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, just a second. Let me finish my thoughts. But then if that does not work, because again, I don't see them meeting the environmental regs. I don't. I honestly don't. And by the way, I, I grew up, not next door, not in my backyard by any stretch of imagination, but I grew up a couple of blocks around the corner from the Circle K in the front of Klarne, all right? There are benefits as well, but I completely understand having it smack dab in your backyard, okay?
Yeah.
So I would like to see us, and I'll make a formal motion in just a second, that we move forward with a formal offer to buy. This is irregular. Commissioner Matt Lo, I know you don't like to do this without some type of an RFP process, but I'm still going to be in favor of sending an acquisition letter and asking to see if they would be willing to sell the property so we can. We can then take the property, and if it's more stormwater that's needed, we could turn it into a stormwater facility. If it's a passive park with a water feature that meets both, then we could do that. If it's leaving, you know, creating natural barriers out of what we can there, I'm, I'm happy with that as well. And then finally, what I'm looking for comment on too, is, and John, I don't know if you're the appropriate one, or Madam Attorney, or both, in order to remove the language for future possible situations like this, is that a text amendment that needs to be proposed on behalf of the city of Tallahassee through the comprehensive plan process? Or how do we address the future issues, please?
Madam Attorney, I would say that that would be an ordinance to our land development code.
Okay.
To make those adjustments.
Okay, an ordinance to the land development.
A text amendment, which comes as an ordinance.
Okay, excellent. All right, hold on, let, let, let me have Madam Attorney weigh in real quick, because she was going to, I think, correct me on something.
Well, I just wanted to, I wasn't going to correct you. I just wanted to sort of flesh out, to comment on the possibility of a purchase. I don't, I don't see any legal reason that that could not be offered. However, we would have to identify and articulate a public purpose for that purchase.
Health, safety, and welfare, there's your public purpose. I would go forward with that. Environmental, environmental concerns.
Well, you have to have a public purpose for the property.
Sure, turn it into a stormwater facility, turn it into a passive park.
We'd have to be able to identify and articulate that. I'm not saying we can't, but I just am saying that that's part of that process.
I understand, and I hear you, and you're absolutely correct. And I would suggest that we put on the table immediately that we want to turn it into a passive park. That meets a public purpose right there, or the environmental benefit as well, or if we need part of the parcel for, you know, a holding pond with a nice walking trail, mulched walking trail around it or something. But yeah, we can make strong argument for public purpose through the park system. Absolutely, no doubt. Cool, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to second your motion, by the way. But John, the, the permit that was, or was suggested, that was, was required from DEP, would it address those environmental concerns that have been brought up? And possibly it would be denied based on that? Or can you tell me where we are with, with that process?
Commissioner, and I can't speak to where they, Circle K is with their involvement with DEP and those required permits. And I don't want to speculate on whether or not they would be able to pass them, but a lot of the concerns that you're hearing in terms of the environmental risks associated with that are, that are actually covered under that DEP review rather than our local government review.
Right.
Whereas our environmental, environmental review is more, oh, how are you managing your stormwater, how you, you know, with landscaping, tree removal, tree planting, things like that.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Is it possible, John, that we could contact DEP and find out where they are in the process?
Sure.
Because, I mean, if, if they're going to deny the permit, then we may not need to go through the motion of buying the property if DEP is going to say, you know, given all these conditions, we're, we're not going to permit this for that location.
They're not going to tell us that, correct? DEP's not going to show their cards and tell us where they are in the process. They're going to tell the applicant before they tell us, correct?
I would agree, I'd say, and I'd actually look to Madam Attorney on this, is that it would be the extent of a public records request.
I, I'd like to see us pursue that and just to see what we get out of that. And if nothing comes of that, then certainly we'll still have the motion to keep purchasing the property. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we formally make an offer to buy the property for penny from the Circle K, and that we begin the process to remove the language through local ordinance for future situations like this. Two parts, are we clear, Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir. I have a question.
Second.
Second, on, sure, yes, sir.
John, in this case, is this, is this not a PUD?
It is.
So this would be, the PUD, we would not be altering by way of ordinance? I just want to be real clear. Or, or if we are, make sure we're clear on that.
And that's something I'd like to, to research with City Attorney on that, because it would be, we have two separate lines of standards, what those in the PUD specific to that, and then those in our general land development code. And when you're developing in PUDs, both apply. So to see how that, that would have to take place in terms of gas stations. So if we were looking at a citywide approach, it would probably outside of the PUD.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we'll make sure we incorporate that, just, but I just wanted to make that distinction.
Understood. Yeah, we want to make sure it's done correctly.
Yeah.
Commissioner Porter, you have been gracious letting me speak on your time. There is a motion on the table. Would you like to continue the conversation on the motion, or dispense with the motion and come back? Or you could speak on the motion, and when we dispense with the motion, we can come back.
I have a question, and then we can dispense with the motion. And I'll, I'll just have one item.
Sure.
And I think Commissioner Matt Lo wanted to speak as well. My question is, do we have any, I, do we know what the property was purchased for?
Off top of her head. We can find that out then.
Can we, is, are we able to find that out right now?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. You want to continue on with comment until we have that?
I just wanted, I, I, I support the motion. I, I think it's a great idea. I just am, before formally giving that direction, would feel more comfortable if we had at least a ballpark.
Of course, no one would, absolutely. What'd they pay? Commissioner Matt Lo, on point with the motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll speak slowly while they do some... 1.8 million from the audience. I would say, I would say, I'm going to support the motion. It was, it was along the lines of, of what I was thinking. I do think if we had acted earlier, I'm not sure why we reached out to Circle K when the Gossvenes were still the, the property owner, when we have a working relationship as a city across the city on different developments and contracts, to be a good corporate citizen. But we are where we are today, and the recourses we do have are deny the permits, go to court, try to purchase the property, or declare the public purpose, a specific required public purpose for eminent domain. I do think a property purchase would make the most sense. But I also think, as was stated by the city manager earlier, not just the land development code, but as we get these PUD applications come forward, we got to put an end to the bait and switch. You know, when these developments come forward and say they're going to build a neighborhood with a town center, and then want to do a PUD amendment a couple of years later to add a gas station, and they know where it's going years before, the neighborhoods know, we, we need to get ahead of that in future developments, particularly gas stations, or, or any of these super environmentally destructive facilities. Because I think, I think 60 feet is like the back of this room, and I could definitely throw a tennis ball back there. And I can't even imagine having my kids across the fence playing in the backyard with everything that comes through a gas station. So I do think trying to acquire it is the best process. I would go further along your comments, Mr. Mayor, if there's something we can do amenable to Circle K through other areas that aren't adjacent, so adjacent to neighborhoods through other properties we own, a land swap you mentioned. And, you know, we own land out there, there's a lot of development going out there. I don't, I don't see why we can't come up with a mutually beneficial agreement that works for everybody. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, on point. I think we need to order, I would prefer doing a land swap first as opposed to buying, because I don't want to send a message that we got a lot of money, that we can just go out and buy some land, you know, to fix a problem, you know, throwing good money at a, at a, at something. So I think we need to look at land swap as a first option, and if that doesn't work, then work our way down, you know, so set, to set a priority of how to do this, because we have communities and with other issues that will see this and come to us and say, we did this for this group, but we're not doing it for another group. So I think what we need to do is to be real careful about how we split this baby to make sure that we, we, we keep the city whole, and everybody doesn't come and say, well, you know, you did it for them, and we do it for us. So look at a potential land swap first, because we do have a bottom to the budget bucket to consider, and not knowing exactly what, what the selling price was, because just because they paid 1.8 for it doesn't mean that that's what they'll want to sell it for, because now they know that there's a demand for it, that could make the cost go up. I'm looking at my, my real estate friend, am I, is that correct?
All right.
They may, they may be, but they know that we want, we want this.
Keep the conversation up, keep it up.
So my, my point is, let's look at a land swap first. If we can't do, we've already tried to talk to them, they won't talk to us. The land swap, then let's look at the other, other ways to deal with this, you know, eminent domain, let's go, let's go out. I don't like eminent domain, but if it's, if that's what it's going to take to get, get this property to protect the, that neighborhood, then do that instead of paying them anything, you know? That's, those are my thoughts.
Yeah. Mayor Perot, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I want to, I still want to add the DEP approach and see what we can find out from them, and then what you've suggested, Mr. Mayor, either the land swap or the purchase. But what I want, what I would really like to see is for us to have some concrete steps that we're going to take, that we can share with these neighbors. Listen, I, I am the president of my neighborhood association, and when I moved into my neighborhood, there was a proposed multifamily development, proposed for our neighborhood, and we were shocked like you all by that. And so I understand, and certainly understand what your concerns are with a gas station being located within 60 feet of your residence. And so, but, but I, I don't want you all to have to keep coming back to, to us with this issue without us having given you some concrete steps that are going to be taken and a timeline for those steps to be taken, Mayor. Not just to put it out there and, you know, a week from now, or a month from now, two months from now, this thing is still lingering, but some realistic timelines for achieving what it is we're proposing here tonight.
Excellent. So are we clear of the motion on the table? Two parts. One deals with the land itself, either acquisition, swap, eminent domain permitting. The second part is initiate a text amendment, remove the gas station language so that we do not have similar situation moving forward. All right, I got Commissioner Matt Lo, then Williams Cox.
Sorry, I just need clarification on the, the text amendment. Going back to the PUD conversation, what's the current buffer for a gas station in the land development?
And we just treat it as a commercial use adjacent to a residential use. So it, so it's not... Nothing unique to a gas station, it'd be the same requirement if it was a, I don't know, any sort of commercial, just a convenience store or a gas station.
Okay. I think 1,000 feet would be a good, a good buffer for a gas station.
Couldn't hear you.
I said I think 1,000 feet would be a good buffer from residential for a gas station use in the future, just as a starting point of that conversation.
Well, they'll, they'll have to bring that back to us for discussion, and, but yeah, I don't think you're off basis, you know, having a healthy buffer for sure. All right, Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you. I want, I would like to add to that, to your motion, a friendly amendment that would rank the options by priority, just so we don't lose sight of, of that. In, in, in your motion, could you rank the priorities so that we don't lose, lose that? In your motion, could you rank the priorities so that we don't lose that in the motion? Land swap, eminent domain, purchase.
I think your eminent domain is your last option, last resort. I would say land swap, purchase offer of 1.8 million, the exact amount that they purchased it from.
And that's fine. That's fine. I know eminent domain is the last.
The possibility of pursuing eminent domain.
I know eminent domain is the last option, especially when you're dealing with residents, but we're dealing with a company that won't talk to us.
Right.
So I don't, there's no love lost as far as I'm concerned.
Sure. Understanding that if we do go that last route, there is, I'm not an attorney, we could lose. We could go, they could sue us, we could go to court, we could lose. But sometimes you got to fight the good fight.
That's right.
Yeah.
I agree. Okay.
Excellent. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passage unanimously 5-0. Commissioner Porter, we are back on your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just one item. I sit on the Appalachia Regional Planning Council and we unanimously adopted a resolution at the end of August to bring back, well, one, as the Appalachia Regional Planning Council, but also to bring back to our respective bodies, a request that the state of Florida join the Southern Rail Commission with the goal of bringing passenger rail back to North Florida. And so I'm asking that we, and I have, if anyone wants copies, I have copies of the resolution that the RPC passed, as well as a template letter that we, I'm asking, we consider sending to the governor requesting that we join the Southern Rail Commission.
Motion on the table. Formal proclamation sent to the governor's office at the state of Florida to join the Southern Rail Commission. Segmented by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Sure. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, but Commissioner Williams-Cox brings this up at almost every CRTPA meeting and I know we've taken action there as well. So wholeheartedly support it and appreciate the efforts on that board as well.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passage unanimously 5-0. Commissioner Porter, you have the floor.
That's all for me.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the J. Gaither flooding issue, we've spent millions of dollars on Capitol Cascade's trail, on stormwater facilities that serve areas outside of the areas there nearby, outside of the south side, water flowing into alleviating flooding concerns across the city and flowing the water through. But we haven't really alleviated the flooding concerns of neighborhoods like J. Gaither and Bond and others. So I was curious, I heard the comments of all the staff meetings they've had, Mr. Manager. Can you give us an update? I know the specific requests for the skirts and dredging by Silver Lake, but where are we on the process of addressing those specific flooding concerns?
Sure. Commissioner Manager.
Commissioner, I've asked Deputy City Manager Barber, let me ask Assistant City Manager Karen Jumperville to come forward too. I've asked them to take the lead. There's been, Mr. Whiting, as he described, lots of staff analysis. Cynthia has the lead on it. And there has been quite a bit of history in that neighborhood of investment. And I think, I think there's even been numerous presentations to the commission about, you know, the improvements happening these over decades, but specifically in terms of today's conversation and the recent conversation, both Cynthia and Karen and a lot of their staff have been involved. Cynthia, would you mind giving us the latest? But I've asked Cynthia to take the lead on this to make sure we've got the proper resources and she's done that. But Cynthia, if you could describe where we are today.
Your old neighborhood. Yeah, my old stumping ground. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor and commissioners, as indicated, we've had a number of meetings in the J. Gaither neighborhood. I've been, I'm the lead on it. Dr. Karen Jumperville and her staff, Director Steve Schaefer, Director Ashley Edwards, as well as the county staff that work for them. But LeAnn Watts-Williams, who is the rep for J. Gaither, who works with them on a daily basis. And there were a number of issues that have been identified and we've made significant progress, I believe, on those issues. As you might remember, last spring, we had a very significant rain event on April 11th. We had made $24 million in investment in that area that we know now prevented flooding from what otherwise would have been 56 homes that would have flooded during that event. There's been some discussion about the gabion walls being placed. As you know, they are placed in some areas in J. Gaither. Those areas are identified through data analysis that tells you where that could make a difference. That's an erosion solution. So we've placed those where we believe that they would give the most benefit. We're working directly with a consultant. We've heard a lot about dredging. Our consultant has told us that there's no amount of dredging that would give a meaningful, make a meaningful difference in the flooding. In fact, what they've told us is it would recognize about a two-inch reduction in the flooding and it will cost millions of dollars to do it. In our estimation, that's quite a bit of money to pay and not have a solution that works for the neighborhood. So we're continuing to work with the consultant and we expect to have a plan by early 2025 on what we believe could be a more meaningful solutions. And that's looking at potential solutions downstream that could make an improvement in the flow of water. One of the residents mentioned about the control in the flow of the water. So that's one of the areas that we've looked at. Other things we've talked about is the maintenance and when we started engaging with the neighborhood, one of the areas that was mentioned about was about the amount of trash that they see from upstream. And I've seen it as well, that comes from businesses that are not in the J. Gaither area. Trash trap was identified as a solution for that. We have a trash trap that's been engineered and we expect to be installed in approximately nine months. That's another million-dollar investment. There was concern about the lack of hard space for parking in the neighborhood. We've done that work as well. We've implemented some traffic control that was asked for in the neighborhood. There have been some requests to add, I think, floating fountains to the area where there is flooding. Of course, we want to wait until we have a solution for addressing the water before we add anything else to that water body. We've made, at the request of the neighborhood, we've made some improvements to the community center as well. We recently applied for and received $9.6 million to help pay for a $12 million pedestrian safety project to complement the street enhancements, the enhancements that we've made in the neighborhood. So as it relates to the flooding, the engineers, our engineers and the consultants that we are working with have indicated to us that the solutions that we've brought forth so far from the neighborhood will not yield the results that they want. We believe it makes a better, it's a better decision for us to wait on that analysis and implement a solution that we believe could drop the water levels anywhere from one to two feet, therefore providing a greater benefit and reducing the chances of flooding in the neighborhood.
Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner. You had the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that update. What I would like to, you said early 25, what I would like to see is an agenda item come back to us in January if the consultants have the information prepared. If not, an update. I don't think we, I don't want to wait for the neighbors to come back and we don't have information. So give us an update on what the consultants are saying, what the neighborhoods are asking for, what that analysis is as an agenda item. And hopefully by January, we have a plan from the consultants that can alleviate the flooding in the manner needed. So the motion is to have an agenda item by January to review all the information from the consultants as well as analysis of what the neighborhood proposed and why and why not that would not work.
Excellent. I'll second the motion, but I'm going to ask, instead of just having an agenda item come back, can we have this be part of our annual retreat and set aside time for discussion and really dive into? Because I think that what the deputy city manager has laid out very well and appropriately. So this is, I believe, more of a regional stormwater issue that flows into Silver Lake. It's not just the lake and the holding facility down there outside of J. Gaither as well, but it's also what's interconnected. But with that motion and by placing this also on the agenda of the retreat coming up, it also bumps it up on the priority list, the stormwater facilities in action that needs to be taken.
Yeah, accepted.
Yeah. Is that, are you cool with that?
Yeah, accepted.
Good deal. Williams-Cox and then Commissioner Porter, please.
I wanted to thank you, Deputy City Manager Barber, for your very inclusive report. Commissioner Richardson and I joined the neighborhood and did a walk-through, a drive-through on golf carts, following the flow of water and all that several months ago. And so we've been there and along with staff, walked that area to see exactly what was going on. But if we think, if we think or we're not sure, if we will have that consultant report by January, we would need to know that in advance as well because I didn't hear you say that it would be ready by January. But if it is, I know as soon as you have it, you're not going to hold it, you're going to share it.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we'll be able to use it. But I think that we also, I want to applaud you all as well because what you're doing now is folks are monitoring. Every time there's a weather event, you all are monitoring it. You knew where the pressure points were and you know what the concerns of the residents were. And it's my understanding, I think that some folks went out and put some sandbags in some of the residents' areas where they had been flooding before to prevent the water from coming inside. I know at least one resident, that's where it occurred because she makes sure she reminds us. And so we're making sure that we handle, where's James, we get a white glove treatment for those because they're elderly, some of those neighbors are elderly and we want to make sure that they're not afraid. And so doing that kind of service, preventive service, I think was, has been very beneficial. And by the way, I wanted to mention too that the J. Gaither neighborhood has lost another giant in their community. My condolences are with you in the loss of Mr. Eddie Hagerbrook, who was also a good friend of my husband and myself. And just a few months ago, you lost Eddie Jackson. So the neighborhood is, I don't want anybody to think that we're ignoring any neighborhood, but you know, there is a bottom and we're trying to do our very best and we want to get the best bang for our buck because there's also wildlife that has to be paid attention to. I know that there's, we saw some of the dams that are being built by beavers and what have you, that's also causing it, as well as the trash. So just because it doesn't seem like anything's happening, it doesn't mean that the work is not being done. The work is being done. I wanted to assure the neighborhood of that.
And Commissioner, to your point, there's also a downstream solution that involves the county, so there's greater coordination with them on that piece.
That's what I was going to bring up.
Because no matter what we do on our end, unless that's addressed, it can bottleneck. So our staff coordinates with the county too to make sure that's addressed.
And what was that call, Cynthia, that you all said they needed to widen? I remember us having the discussion about what the county needed to do to increase the flow of water.
In terms of widening, it's like bottlenecking anything else. We've got that much water going through a more narrow space.
Right.
It is going to go through slower. So of course, you're getting a little more technical than my experience allows me to get, but our technical staff works with the county. Karen, does it have an official name? Okay, Karen, that is, when I mentioned the downstream solutions, that is one of the solutions. To see with those type of enhancements, will it provide the kind of relief that the neighborhood needs from the water and from the flooding?
Sure.
Follow-up on that. You know, it was interesting that Apostle Whiting and I had a conversation about the flooding issue. And he said, well, Mr. Richardson, I tell you what, he said, next time it rains, ride through the neighborhood and see what is happening. And lo and behold, Helene came through and a neighbor had asked, my wife and I, she had left the city, and she asked my wife and I to check on her house. And so the day after the storm, we rode through the J. Gaither neighborhood and I called Apostle Whiting and told him that there was no flooding at her home. Creek Road had flooded, but there was no flooding at her home. So what we have done to this point, I think, is working. Is there more to do? Certainly there is. And Apostle Whiting, we've been on top of it. And what you hear now is that the work that the consultant will do will be brought back to us as quickly as possible in January for us to consider and how we go forward from here. I don't think we.
Great. We're going to. We are in the middle of a motion. We are in the middle of discussion right here. You got to let us finish up real quick, okay? All right. And Commissioner Matlow, I'm going to bring this in for Orlando. I think you got support for your motion. Couple of other things I'd love to see when we come back to have the discussion. Deputy City Manager, number one, what is the cost of dredging the lake? How much is it going to cost to dredge the lake? Because when we talk about the smell, a lot of that comes from, I think, the decay, that if you can't convey it, you get the debris that ends up on the bottom, it just keeps decomposing on the bottom. It does have a smell. I remember this from my days as a county commissioner representing Lake Jackson where we had a similar issue along the shore with the dying and dead decay that needed to be cleaned up and dredged. And they did dredge the lake before I got elected, but I do know that the lake needs to be dredged, also for water quality, it probably needs to be dredged, okay? Number two.
As it relates to the dredging, there are some environmental hurdles that we would have to cross because it is a wetland. Not that it can't be done, but they would be significant time consuming and probably costly and as we've indicated, may not yield the, they're not expected to yield the type of reduction in water levels, but may yield the kind of benefit that you just expressed. But it is something we'd have to work with our environmental agency, which is for us is DEP.
Awesome. That'd be great. Yeah, and just bring all that back so that, you know, in January, so we know what we're dealing with. Also, when it comes to the skirt ditches, you have a long-term solution and that's awesome. Do we have a short-term solution and the near term? I mean, I don't know, I'm just a little, I'm on edge watching all of the Southeastern United States with these hurricanes and what water has done, right? From North Carolina all the way down to central Florida and flooding the whole nine yards. Now, while we're not going to have that type of flooding, we do know the significant damage that comes with flooding. And so do we have short-term solutions to get us through hurricane season, to get us through the end of the calendar year while we're implementing the long-term solutions as well, okay? We'd love to know what we're doing, and also specifically with the skirting, what we're doing about the trash as well with the screens and everything. Finally, it has been brought to our attention that we do have the city of Tallahassee properties, the house sites, the homesteads that we acquired, have we implemented those into our stormwater plan down there? And if not, is, what is the plan to incorporate them in the overall master plan of the stormwater system in the J. Gaither neighborhood and convey downstream? And finally, when we talk about downstream, I think we have to be prepared to have a two-pronged solution. Either the county's with us or they're not. If they're with us, then that's a conveyance issue with them widening the ditch.
Right.
They're not with us, then it's a holding issue on our side. So it'd be interesting to hear what ideas, and I'm not putting you on the spot now, Cynthia, you know more about this, you and Karen, than all of us in this room put together, but things to think about and to bring back to us because I think that this stormwater management issue in the greater J. Gaither neighborhood and south and north feeding into it is a bigger issue than just the neighborhood issue. But Commissioner Matlow, for the purposes of tonight, I love your motion and I'm going to support it. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passage unanimously 5-0. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two more items. Based on conversations earlier, and I know we've had this conversation in the past, but you know, I think it's time this board officially adopts Robert's rules of order and brings in an independent parliamentarian. So I'll make a motion to schedule an agenda item at our next meeting to adopt Robert's rules of order and hire an independent parliamentarian.
Second.
I didn't hear you, we can't understand you on this end.
Sorry. The motion is to bring back an agenda item to officially adopt Robert's rules of order for this body and hire an independent parliamentarian.
Okay. Motion on the table that's been made by Commissioner Matlow is to formally adopt Robert's rules of order and hire an independent parliamentarian, segmented by Commissioner Porter. I am not going to support the motion. We operate under Robert's rules of order and we have a parliamentarian called the city attorney. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
And the motion fails three to two with the mayor, the mayor pro tim, and Commissioner Williams-Cox in dissent. Commissioner Matlow, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And then the final issue, we brought this up at our previous meeting, but we were in a different budget cycle. But French Town Rising had a back balance when it came time to apply for special events funding and they were told that they wouldn't be eligible for special events funding this upcoming year. upcoming year, now that we're in this budget year. I know we've done in the past, we've done amendments to offer in-kind services. I'm not proposing we give any cash, but we look at the services we provide to close the roads and law enforcement and security for the remainder of this football season for French Town Rising.
Second.
Commissioner Matlow, we're having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if it's the sound system or what, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. So, the, is this on? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. The motion is to provide in-kind services for French Town Rising for the remainder of this football season, to close the roads and provide law enforcement, et cetera, through Parks and Rec, as we've done in the past.
Well, according to Robert's Rules of Order, this is the next meeting after that motion took place, so I think that the appropriate motion would be to reconsider the motion that took place.
Different motion.
On point.
I don't think Commissioner Matlow said there was actually a motion, it was a discussion.
Oh, a discussion? I'm sorry.
At the previous meeting, yes.
Two points. We don't operate under Robert's Rules of Order, it's not adopted by this body. The second point, there wasn't a motion, we had a discussion, so we never voted on this specific item. We were in a different budget year.
Okay. So, your motion is to formally provide in-kind services to the $255,000 to French Town Rising for the remaining of the season?
I'm not sure that's the dollar amount specifically, but if it is, yes. What we've done in the past for French Town Rising and in-kind services to maintain that level for the remainder of the football season.
Okay. And there is a motion on the table made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter. I do not intend to support the motion until I have a full accounting of every single penny that has been spent on the French Town Rising. Since their inception, have we received any end-of-year, end-of-project report on French Town Rising and how that money was spent?
Mayor, I'll have to check. I'm not sure.
Okay. As of last meeting, I believe that we still hadn't received a single report on how the pennies that were allocated were spent, the money that was spent.
I'll find out, and let you know.
Okay. So, until I have those formal reports in front of me on how every single dollar was spent on French Town Rising, broken down where the deficit is, how we came about that deficit, because it was my understanding, when they made the first proposal, it was to cover the cost of the event. And now, we're coming back and saying that there's a $55,000 deficit. I need to know where the deficit came from. Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I cannot support it, not knowing how much money we're talking about, number one. Number two, the sponsor has gone public in saying some pretty egregious things about...
Been politicized, yeah.
About this. And I really don't want to get involved in that process, because we really need to turn the page and let this, let all of this, let this election cycle end, because we have gone, in the terms of somebody who I don't like to quote, we have gone bat-blank crazy and forgotten anything about how we have worked together to do things in our community. And I've been asked many times, "How is French Town Rising?" And so, we, one, we need to know how much money are we talking, how much in-kind services we're talking. Secondly, the sponsor needs to get in control, because what is happening is we're saying things that is going viral, saying that we're against black people? Hello, I'm black. Just came back from Africa. So, let's get this thing back on the rails. And fam, you had to issue a cease and desist. It's just messy.
It is.
And I don't, the city has enough issues to deal with, instead of trying to get into somebody else's messiness at this point in time. So, I can't support it either, because I don't have the information that is needed, and it's just messy right now.
Yeah, we don't even have a dollar amount. Commissioner Matlow, back to you before we take the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think it would be similar, as we do for Springtime Tallahassee and other events that we provide in-kind services to, and we have previously. I am not interested in getting political, I recognize the discussion, but you know, I do hear from constituencies, I would like to see this festival continue. So, regardless of feelings for any individual, regardless for anything outside of that, my desire is to make sure French Town Rising can continue, and I think this is the way to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. And the organization, as you mentioned, Springtime Tallahassee and all other organizations, provide a financial detail to the penny of how that money was spent as they apply for the next fiscal year. And as far as I know, we have not received a single detailed budget on how those monies have been spent since its inception, and we don't even know how much we're talking about right now. Mayor Pro Temp.
Thank you. You know, I have to tell you, I was really hurt by comments that were made by Mr. Barber and the sponsor of French Town Rising. I was hurt, because I have a history with French Town. My aunt and uncle owned a business in French Town. My father lived in French Town and graduated from the original Lincoln High School. So, the comments that were made hurt me personally, I'm gonna admit that. It really hurt. But on top of that, I have consistently supported French Town Rising since it began. There were times when I was the only elected official there at the French Town Rising event, on a number of occasions. So, to say that I didn't support French Town Rising, or somehow was against black people when I'm black, I've been black for 68 years, was, I just couldn't believe it. And so, to set the record straight, to set the record straight, I have supported French Town Rising since its inception. I don't know that I even missed one up until this year. And again, there were times when I was the only elected official at that event, a number of occasions. And so, to say that I'm against black people and against French Town, when all that we've done to develop and revitalize French Town, $6 million investment, which is unprecedented in the history of this city, that kind of money outside of city programs and services that would be put into a neighborhood anyway, $6 million invested in the redevelopment and revitalization of French Town. So, yeah, I was hurt by those remarks. And I couldn't support going forward with this request unless and until we get a full accounting of how that money has been spent up to this point.
All those in favor of the motion on the table by Commissioner Matlow, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails three to two with the mayor, mayor pro temp, and Commissioner Williams Cox in dissent. Commissioner Matlow, you still have the floor.
Nothing further from me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, today is my firstborn's birthday. He's turned 47, so yeah, and KT's an old man, he's officially our age. The second thing I want to mention is that my chief of staff, my aide, my bestie is a two-time cancer survivor, she's a breast cancer survivor. And so, she is doing her annual cancer knockout virtual breast cancer symposium on tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. The information is available online, and we're doing, she's doing this to make folks aware of, you know, breast cancer and the things that we can do to prevent it, because early detection is the best. She has some rock star presenters, including Dr. Andrea Fraul, head of medical services at TMH, and many others, some survivors and whatnot. That information, I will make it available on my Facebook page. And also, staying in that same vein, she's turning 60, my chief of staff is turning 60 on Saturday. So, wish her happy birthday, that's Pastor T. Tisong, Dr. Tawanda Diabla Davis, to others. We just got back from Ghana. We had a fantastic time, we had an opportunity to visit schools there, visit individuals, and an experience that almost took my breath away was visiting the castles where slaves were held and the torture, reliving the torture that they were put through before they were sent, before being sent to the United States. It's breathtaking, and I'll just tell you, Africa, Ghana is a beautiful place, homeland of our own, Abena Oguntia, and just a beautiful place with beautiful people. Don't believe the National Geographic stuff you see on TV. I didn't see one monkey, I didn't see any elephants or giraffes. I just saw people, beautiful people, working together for a common cause, and their motto is moving forward, always moving forward, never backwards. How appropriate was that for me to be a part, to hear that, being from Tallahassee? Because I'm always talking about moving our city forward, moving our city forward. Our tour guide gave me a new meaning for PhD. I know we talk about, you know, philosophy or doctrine and what have you. PhD, he says, is pull them down. I don't want anyone in our city to ever think that that's correct. We don't want to pull anybody down, we want to lift people up. And so, I learned some things, I'm forever changed. Follow you, you can go on Facebook and see all of the stuff that I put out there. It has just been a very eye-opening experience, and it's gonna make me a better person, make me understand what's important, because I had an opportunity to see lots of entrepreneurs on the street doing their thing. They weren't begging, they were selling and trying to make a living for their families. And we're doing the same thing here. We're trying to do our best to make a living for our families and to move our cities forward. So, it was a wonderful experience, and I'm hoping that we, as a family, will come together and work together to move our city forward without agendas other than people, not politics, but people. We have gotten ourselves into a, some type of rut at the national level, at the state level, and at the local level. We are not setting good examples for our young people, and I think we need to stop and reflect and do better. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several issues that I wanted to bring up, and Stephanie is here, and can correct me if I'm wrong on anything. Stephanie, thank you for being here and staying so late. But I was in a forum with representatives from organizations, with representatives of organizations representing women and girls, and there were several issues that came up that I promised them I would bring back to the commission, for either the city manager to give us an update on where these issues are, or to come back with how we might be able, as a city, to address these issues. I've shared that information with the city manager, and I'll run through these as quickly as I can, Mr. Mayor. But one is, or the first, is the installation of free period product dispensers in city hall and city community centers. Apparently, in, what was the date? 2021. Thank you, Stephanie. It was agreed that those would be placed in city hall and in our community centers. So, the city manager, if you could give us, maybe at the next meeting, an update on where we are with implementing that. The second issue was safety on our Star Metro buses. The issue came up that there were a number of women in particular who felt unsafe on our Star Metro buses riding the routes at night. And so, if we could get some information on that. The third is baby diaper changing accommodations in both men and women's bathrooms or restrooms.
In city facilities?
In city, these are city facility. Now, Stephanie, I don't know that I can address you at this point, but yeah, yeah, we can look at it for city facilities, and then we'll go from there. But that'll be our starting point, is looking at the baby diaper changing accommodations in both men's and women's bathrooms in city hall and city-owned facilities. The next issue was the issue of parental leave. They are requesting that we consider increasing our parental leave from six-week paid leave for both fathers and mothers, and copy what, I guess, copy, use what the county has done. They've gone to eight-week, 100% paid leave for both the mothers and the fathers. And what they've indicated in the information that Stephanie sent me is, eight-week, 100% paid is not the golden standard, but at least we would look at getting to the level of the county in that respect. And then, lastly, Mr. Mayor, you may have been involved in this still, is the issue of daycare and providing daycare for our workers. And I know that your office has been involved in that, and there have been some discussions, so if we could just get an update on where we are with that issue.
So, to be clear, my idea is not necessarily daycare for just City of Tallahassee employees, but a 24/7, 365 facility in our community. And I know the commission's actually done an absolutely fantastic job.
Yeah. And Stephanie indicated that they are...
Kids Incorporated, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's time for an update on that.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Commissioner Porter, on point?
Thank you. Did we not make a motion for that to come back to us several months ago?
Well, part of what we're doing is working with the commission and working with Kids Incorporated to do the field analysis, the appropriate, the idea that, at least, I've been working on with our outside partners, is trying to identify specific neighborhoods, and quite frankly, specific facilities within neighborhoods, where you can best meet the need, knowing that transportation is one of the hugest barriers to quality childcare, and being able to work on the neighborhood level with census data to identify, and maybe I'm just behind, I'm looking at Stephanie, who's checking, I think we're at the tail end, maybe, of that analysis, which then it would be appropriate, Commissioner Porter, to bring it back. But I don't have the data from our community partners yet, nor have I had a chance to sit down and work with management, and until we get that data, and I know the commission was taking the lead, and I know the Kids Incorporated was taking the lead as well, and we'll get that, and of course, we'll bring it back ASAP. That's one of my top priorities, and I'm excited about it.
And, Mr. Mayor, if we could have some follow-up on those issues at our next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, the next meeting is next Wednesday, we just released the agenda, December, I'm sorry, November 6th would be the following meeting. That might be tight, we'll work toward that end, Commissioner?
If not, then January.
We've got one in December.
Oh, yeah.
I think December, we could accomplish this, by December.
Let's do it then.
Okay.
Because I want to give you enough time to do it right and have all the information that we need.
Yes, sir.
December, the first meeting in December.
Excellent. All right, I got, I got three fun things. First of all, big football weekend, CMU at Jackson State, Lord State at Duke, Friday night, Saturday night game, go teams.
Yeah.
Hope everybody's well, and if you're traveling to those games, have a great time. Talking about storm response and First Florida Capitol, and there's a connection between the two, happy story. First Florida Capitol, we had a very successful ribbon-cutting dedication, over 100 and 150 people came out, it was wonderful. Thank you all for coming out as well, it's good to see everybody. Obviously, we have the First Florida Capitol Festival on November 10th, that's being put on by the friends of the First Florida Capitol. It's gonna be a great, great Sunday, and want everybody to come out on November 10th, the Cascades Park. It's our bicentennial anniversary of the day that the first legislative session took place in the First Florida Capitol. And as you all know, T. Payne will be performing at Adderley on November 10th, to cap off the weekend, and then it flows right into Labor Day on Monday as well. And then, also, going back and highlighting storm response, there's one department at the city that I really want to give a lot of credit and credence to, because a lot of times, they get overlooked, and this is the Fleet Department. You know, Fleet is who moves the heavy equipments. Fleet is who works, the mechanics that work on everything within the City of Tallahassee, and not only do it, they do an incredible behind-the-scenes job during the storms. I mean, it's not the first department to come to mind, but they're so crucial in the mission, and I really appreciate them. But I've also had the opportunity to work with them, some of the help of the logistics of moving the wood for the First Florida Capitol, and they're just great men and women. And I just wanted to make sure that I take a second to recognize all aspects outside of the day-to-day operations of what Fleet does for us. And finally, I'm just gonna close and wish my Henry Daly a happy 14th birthday this Friday, and we're gonna celebrate in style. Ladies and gentlemen, we will be back tomorrow morning at 9:30 for the CRA meeting, and then we will be back next Wednesday for the regularly scheduled city commission meeting. We stand adjourned. Mayor.
Mayor.